Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Okay, we're gonna get started if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge to allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure Kayla has the dog this morning. Good morning, and welcome to the December 10th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our thought for the day, what you do speaks so loud that I cannot hear what you say.
Amen.
We've got a really special dog this week. It's Bosco. He's a three-and-a-half-year-old lab mix. He's been neutered. He's not a stray or anything. His owner had to move into a condominium, and he had to turn in the dog. His shots are up to date. He's healthy as can be, loving, looking for a good family. Available for adoption Saturday at 3 o'clock. Stop by, he'll make a great pet, and if he's too big for you, we've got other dogs to pick from.
At 9:45, we'll have our second public hearing on the solid waste disposal, and at various times two days, starting at 10:00 to 12:30, we'll have various budget hearings. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
No investments, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a couple hires at Golden Acres I wish to discuss with the Board, and also update you on our continuing labor negotiations. Both those topics are allowed for executive session under the sunshine laws. Our request that we go into executive session is a conclusion of regular board meeting today to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve an enter and contract with MAXIMUS for the 2009 indirect cost allocation plan for 2011, the amount of $17,500 with the 60-day cancellation clause.
So moved. MAXIMUS, anybody got a second?
I'm sorry, I turned the page.
Number 10.
I'm second.
Okay, I wondered why.
Any discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an enter and agreement with RWL Architects, Illyria, the amount not to exceed $10,000 to perform architectural reconstruction for Lorraine County Law Library. This county's insurance has provided funds to reconstruct after the fire.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Community Development, approve an enter and contract with Community Alliance and Commissioners with Community Development providing administrative coordinator services for Lorraine County Community Alliance effective January 1st, 2010 through December 31st, 2010, at a rate now to exceed $25,000 with the 60-day cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Blair, did you have any comments on this?
No, other than the fact that the Alliance has sufficient monies on hand to pay for this contract.
Okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, increase room rates at Lorraine County Golden Acres Nursing Home, $273 for semi-private and $175 for private effective February 1st, 2010. This reflects an increase of $7 per day for the semi-private and $5 a day for the private.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cortez, is this because Medicare and Medicaid rates went up? Is that why we're making these increases?
That's correct, Commissioner. We are just keeping pace with the reimbursement rates that are provided from the federal government.
And is it standard across the private sector that the private room rates are higher than the Medicaid and Medicare rates?
That I can't answer, but normally in the past, I've seen a slight difference between the private pay and the Medicaid reimbursement rates, but I can't tell you that it's standard or not. I never really looked into it. Historically, though, we have always been priced that way.
We have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve an enter and various child daycare services with licensed childcare centers and licensed type-A childcare homes for fiscal year 2010. Authorize director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors per last form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Approve an enter and software maintenance agreement with MAXIMUS for the Windows version of the program Expenditure Tracking System effective January 1st, 2010 through December 31st, 2010, in the amount of $2,150. And authorize director to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors per last form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under LCT, approve various change orders to Schreimer Construction North Homestead for Lorraine County Transportation Center Phase Two projects. Funds are available in the Transportation Center account. One, change order number three, 10-week time extension for completion and cost of $24,000 to cover the additional costs for supervision and miscellaneous expenses. Final completion date will be January 30, 2010. Two, change order four, modify existing patio construction to reflect revisions for the forthcoming Phase Three project designs in the amount of $44,360.57 and a contingency allowance of $25,000 totaling $69,360.57. This is due to seasonal weather conditions such as, but not limited to, relocating concrete stair and ramp locations, delete brick-faced retaining walls, delete cast-stone copings, new foundation effective piers for future canopy columns, relocate the flagpole, storm sewer catch basins, delete all landscaping, foundation for the sign, revise ramp and stair construction, and provide wall hydrant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, is there any chance that we would be able to use this money for operations rather than improvements?
Only if you didn't want to pay the contract that you've already agreed to. This work is already work in progress. Some of these are field change orders that were required. Some of them, most of them were necessitated by the issue of not being able to use the inside tunnels to go up to the tracks. That was always the plan, and as you know, when we finally cleared all the hurdles with Norfolk Southern, they did not want to permit us access through the tunnels and up through the tracks, so we had to locate the facilities to reach the tracks to the outside retaining wall, which is not unusual in the new bills that you see in Cleveland, but that required some reconfiguration of all the outside work that already had been completed and designed and the contracts let. So that's what these change orders were. But this contract is already approved, and the work is already being done. Again, these are field conditions, so I would say no.
Okay.
But if you wanted to cancel the work in progress, you know, I mean, I can't tell you, you probably wouldn't have some rights there, but I don't know how.
There is additional monies that Commissioner Kayla is working on.
Yeah, I've been working with Congresswoman Sutton's office and our staff and their staff back and forth, and I've got copies of two letters Congresswoman Sutton sent out to Honorable David Hovey from the House Committee on Appropriations and Honorable Jim Oberster, our House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, looking for ways for us to use our capital dollars that haven't been expended yet towards operations. We're hoping by the end of the year, new appropriations bills will be signed by President Obama, and that's what these letters reflect, so they're up here if anybody wants to see them. Jim, I gave you your copy right for tomorrow.
Right, the, you know, and it's a good time to talk about this, because we have been working diligently behind the scenes to try to avert a complete shutdown of transit. It hasn't really been noted that we had to serve contract notice on various parties to be able to facilitate this in a timely manner with regard to cost structure, but that we still continue to work towards an outcome that's going to be more positive for the county. The, I understand that if the bill is signed sometime December, we may be able to use 5%. I understood they wouldn't give us the 10%, like they did the last time, but 5% of our uncommitted rolling stock and brick and mortar money towards operation costs, which will give us a good shot at retaining, you know, some decent amount of fixed route services. And tomorrow, we have some people that are going to be tomorrow evening in the room with the Secretary of Transportation, and are going to present a package of our issues and all of our legislative letters that Commissioner Kayla has been working on to the Secretary of Transportation, and kind of plead our case for some assistance down here in Lorraine County. Clearly, we're not alone in our needs, but at least we're elevating our problem to the highest possible decision-makers to try to get some relief. At that point, there's not a lot we can do after that, but hope that they release some dollars and we can obviously keep some fixed route system in Lorraine County, but we are working very, very hard, and then the Commissioners have been working very hard on behalf of the transit riders here in Lorraine County.
You said 5%. Do you know 5% of what?
I didn't bring the numbers, Commissioner. I gave, you got those, we gave you those numbers?
I didn't get a commitment of 5% anywhere, Jim. I'm just asking.
I said that's what I heard.
It's maybe a letter I don't have as of yet, whatever you have, Ron.
What I had heard that they were, because they did 10 before, they were thinking that only 5 this time.
Okay, I had no.
Our era allocation was $4.004 million. It'd be between 5 and 10%. It sounds like it's going to be 5. 10% is 467, so you do the math, it's 230.
Over that.
Right, okay. Is that what you got from Sutton's office? They were hoping to be successful, because they didn't have a number when I was speaking to them Tuesday night, or?
They said it to me when I talked to them Tuesday night, they said that it would be in either the 5 or the 10%.
Oh, okay, either or.
They'd shoot for 10, but that we needed to be prepared if they could only get 5, and so it'd be roughly, you know, 200 to 400,000.
Because I saw your response to that, that we would do the best we can.
Right.
And that's also using it as our, not needing a local match or using it as our local match to?
Well, we asked that question. We didn't get a firm answer, but we told them that that was an issue.
When I spoke to them designing the letter, Nicole had said they were going to add that to the letter to be used as our local match to acquire some additional funds.
And we're also working with NOAC, and we think there may be funds there that would help on the brokerage program, those that are, you know, just starting in the workplace or leaving the former welfare roles, the brokerage program. So we're hopeful that we can do something with that, and it's a demand right service, so the two of them, we're hopeful.
And NOAC is trying to shift some money around for us right now.
The STP.
Right, the STP.
Right.
The, again, all of these things we were working on, but we had to preserve our contractual rights in the chance that we didn't achieve success. So it's not over yet. We're hopeful, and a lot of work's been done there. And, you know, and of course, we've been getting criticized because of the airport and what's going on there versus what we were doing with transit. I don't know if the Board has a tolerance to talk a little bit about what direction I've received with regard to the airport or not. That's up to you.
Well, the letters did go out, correct, that we were going to shut down our funding of the airport and asking the entities that are there to pony up to keep it operating?
Right, it's starting to get a little ugly, and we knew it would, and as I informed each Commissioner when I met with you, that this was going to be a real, a real fight. And clearly, we haven't really started with the FAA yet. The last time we broached the subject with the FAA, we came away pretty bruised because of prior commitments with regard to grant money. In those allocations, there's a commitment to keep the airport operating for a certain amount of years to receive those grant monies, and those, some of those have a very long, a long life. And so I believe that as we try to steer the airport towards either a complete revenue neutral or a closing, because the Board has indicated that we cannot make the numbers work, they were willing to close the airport, I think we're going to end up in a pretty litigious situation with a lot of people. We approached that about four years ago, four or five years ago, we got, and we worked our way through that without serious litigation, but this time, I think it's going to, it's going to occur. But for those people that are wondering why transit has been on the chopping block and not the airport, we were just, we were following very closely behind with the airport and working towards the goals of not having to support it with any general fund money whatsoever. And I don't know that we're going to be successful at that, but Ron and I are still working with the people out there, and we're getting ready probably today or tomorrow to make the approach on the FAA.
I spoke to one of the parties out the airport yesterday, and he indicated that there's like $10 million of economic impact that comes back to Lorraine County from that airport. Is that a true figure?
No.
No?
I, once, once again, every time we've had the issue of the airport come up, they talk about this. Right now, the only money I'm aware of coming in from the FAA, Ron, is about $150,000 a year in some capital money that we use, and then as, let me remind the Board, we rolled it up the last three years to be able to do a big project. So we're getting ready to do about a half a million dollar project, because we kept banking the money, because you're allowed to roll it, because usually $150,000 won't produce a lot of work, and it's piecemealed. I'm not aware of any additional FAA money that's coming into Lorraine County vis-à-vis the airport.
I don't think that's what they're talking about.
No, they're talking about the economy.
They're talking about the economy, from what they're doing out there, which are 50-some-odd entities, 75 leases, probably from the revenues generated and product coming in and out of the county, I would guess, or 10 million numbers coming through.
That's what he's talking about.
I'll try to be brief on this. Yes, it does generate economic benefit. We have life care out there, and every time somebody's in an automobile accident, there is a real value to the county, but certainly to the emergency systems to help that person, the family, the individual that's hurt, but it's not dollars, and we need cash. That's what the problem is. It is an economic benefit in all those people out there, but.
I'm not aware of any business out there that's an economic engine or a dynamo doing business. If it was, we wouldn't be suffering the failure of the FBI to support the airport, and most of those businesses actually will stay in business someplace else if the airport is closed. We get so little money.
There are entities out there, though, that are, that are very well-received. You know, Herb Delaporte has his operation out there, and there are some players out there, but it's.
10 million?
It's, yeah, it's not the, you know, the thing like we have in some of the larger cities that have an industrial park that are operating.
And the life, and we have an industrial park, and we've never been able to get the industrial park off the ground. This actual activity is coming out of these hangars that we, and we get no concession on the business out there. That's another thing, the failure of the airport years and years and years ago was usually when the business locates on the airport, there's a business concession, a percentage given to the airport for the operation. We have none of that coming in, and Lifelight just got placed out there within the last few months, so it hasn't been churning out a lot of, a lot of revenue out there, because it's fairly new place out there. So, I mean, we're working with the folks, and we're talking about things that may have to be done, but, but, you know, at the end of the day, that airport has never been self-sufficient. We have been down to running it on a handful of dollars, and when I say handful of dollars, that's about 200,000, 250,000 a year. I need to remind the Board, it was only six or seven years ago, they were giving the airport a million five. So we've been doing a lot with very little, but we're running out of opportunities here to do, to do anything different. So, you know, I'll bring it up more fully as the weeks pass here, but those that are wondering why transit and not the airport, don't need to wonder anymore, because both those issues are being addressed at the same time.
Every issue is being addressed.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything further? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Aye.
Under the engineer authorized posting a low limit sign set state weight limit reduction by 25% on various county roads for thaw and moisture period in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5577.07 effective February 1st, 2010, and this should say May 1st, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized engineer to proceed with force count for normal and general maintenance and repair during the year 2010 on county roads for the safety to travel in the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Authorized county engineer to participate with dowdown in State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 5513.01B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Prosecutor Treasurer, except and journalized adjuduitac appropriation and expenditure report submitted by Lorraine County Treasurer and Lorraine County Prosecutor pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code 321.261 for the year 2009. Revenue generated for 2009 was $696,624.47, and the 2010 estimate of anticipated revenue will be approximately $697,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister?
I have no further discussions or report this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no report either this morning, Commissioners.
Commissioners report.
Just wanted to let everyone know that we are collecting items for the Genesis House Domestic Violence Shelter, and some of those items that we would like to see collected would be toothpaste, toothbrushes, mouthwash, deodorant, razors, lotion, shampoo, conditioner, body wash, all those types of toiletry items, over-the-counter Tylenol cough syrup, milk, and magnesium, things like that, anything that's not opened and, and new, and this will be collected through December 22nd, and we will have that on the, at the Commissioners' office on the fourth floor if you would like to drop them off, or you can contact my assistant Sherry Penna at 329-5101. Thank you.
Commissioner?
That's it.
Okay. Busy week besides transit, working in Congresswoman's office most of the week. Attending the County Commissioners Association of Ohio State Meetings, everybody's going through the same problems we have. Governor Strickland spoke at our opening ceremonies, talking about how difficult the budget is and trying to meet the needs of the State of Ohio, the transportation challenges, and Commissioner Blair can probably talk more about that, because I got interrupted and had to leave the meeting for an issue with our transit. Just the updates were going on. Our Northeast District Commissioners Association, which I'm a member of, met, and we actually had some, actually, good meetings. Tuesday was probably the best. I've got a budget resource manual, a rough draft proposal, that the Ohio Municipal, Ohio Judges Organization and the County Commissioner are working on how to work through budget needs, which right now is probably our main focus. And also learned a lot about the OSU extension through the, their restructuring they were explaining to county commissioners, so busy week with a lot more work to go. So go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, it was very informative, and whoever you talked to, you learned a few more tidbits about county government in general. I was pleased that Governor Strickland addressed the group, and in addition, Perry Sabaty, his budget director, whatever her appropriate title is, was there. A couple years ago, Perry was one of the keynote speakers at the Lorraine County Community Alliance meeting, and so she has a little history of Lorraine County as well, and Jolene Malataras, the head of the Ohio Department of Transportation. And I brought some information back about counties facing fiscal challenges, and it's not just counties, it's also townships and any other form of government, so if anybody would like to have a copy of it, it's two pages. And the session was moderated by Sciota County Commissioner, who they are in fiscal emergency, and he talked about the stages that they went through and what they have done and how long they hope to be there. And I, it's not nice to laugh at anybody else's problems, but he told how they first got into this problem, because they built a new jail. So, you know, and then their income decreased significantly, so, you know, they had a plan, but the air went out of their balloon, but they are addressing the situation. And he said that he was a former superintendent of schools in that area, and that he had a good working rapport with the two county judges, because they both happened to be his former students. I like that, so we'll see how we fare today. That's the end of my report, thank you.
Our next Commissioners' meeting is December 17, 22nd, no meeting the week of '29. Organizational meeting will be January 11th at 9:30, and then the Commissioners' regular meeting will be Wednesday at 9:30 on January 20th. For correspondence?
I move the reading be waved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Is there any public comment before we start our hearings? Mr. Billman, second public hearing, solid waste.
Dan Billman, solid waste director for the Lorraine County. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Dan.
We are here today to do a public hearing on the designation of facilities as required by law. I guess I'd have to ask if there was anybody from the public that would like to speak on the issue?
I clearly would like to hear from Allied Waste, who I believe is requesting this, and I think I saw Mr. Kitter in the group, and last week, both he and another, Mr. Cortesman were here. I know they called my office and asked to meet with me, and I did not have an opportunity, but since this is an issue of interest to all of us, I think that they should come forward and make a public statement, and that's my request.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you, Dave. You're welcome. This is totally going to be impromptu, and my voice is shot, so I'll do the best I can. This request for designation also involves a request on our part to get a fee reduction for out-of-district waste. Now, we've asked and have been, I guess, dealing with this for the better part of a year, and the reason we asked for the reduction is due to some competitive issues at other landfills that take waste from out of county, Cuyahoga specifically, for a dollar a ton, and we're paying Lorraine County $4 a ton. Now, the result of that, which we knew was going to happen, and it did happen, was the fact that we had a contract with the city of Cleveland for their disposal of their solid waste. That contract went out for bid, and as we suspected and expected, we lost that contract to another landfill with a much lower fee structure. Now, that contract was awarded to another company, and it's a one-year contract for that particular, or for the city of Cleveland, so that means they can go right back out for bid in June or July of 2010. Now, what we have asked and, and continue to ask for, so that we can be more competitive on these bids, is the fee reduction as part of this designation process. So we're not asking for a dollar a ton, we're just asking that the fee be lowered from $4 a ton to $2.40 per ton. And for that, there are several things that you will see in a proposal we submitted, which you may have or may not have, but we submitted a proposal to the county on Monday of this week that has certain elements to it in conjunction with the fee reduction.
Can I stop you there?
Can I stop you there? Mr. Billman, do we have a copy of that?
No, ma'am.
Why?
Who did you submit it to, Dave?
It was submitted here on, to Purchasing Department. I don't know who has it, but.
Oh, great. You haven't received it? Okay. Continue, sorry.
There was a request for that proposal, and the request was, proposal be submitted on December the seventh by two o'clock, which is what we did. So, you know, all that said, what we're looking for is this fee reduction through two thousand and twelve. We're not asking for it forever. There are some reasons for that, which I'm not going to talk publicly about, but we expect the other county where this other waste is being taken to will change their fee structure in two thousand and twelve. So, we have and are committed to bringing all Cuyahoga County waste that we control to this landfill, which is significantly more due to the merger between Republic Services and Allied Waste. There is a significant amount of additional volume that we do control in Cuyahoga County, and will continue to bring to Lorraine County with the fee reduction. And that's about all I have to say. I'm open to questions.
And thank you. I think it lays it out, and I think that all the people here and myself needed to hear that specifically.
Okay.
That's what you're asking for. It's pretty clear and simple.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. I guess my question is, I don't have it with me today. I had at the last public hearing article, news article, that stated that Allied and Republic are now making a lot of money, even without the fee reduction. Can you address that? That really, do you really need it now? I mean, something's turned around, obviously, where you're being pretty productive.
I don't know where you heard that or what news article you read it in, but, as, I mean, we're a publicly traded company. Our books are rolled up into a national, what do I want to say? I mean, when someone looks at our books, they're looking at the national.
This is Waste and Recycling. Republic's earnings jumped by thirty million in third quarter.
That's on a seven, or I'm sorry.
November twenty-fifth of oh-nine.
That's on a nine-billion-dollar corporation. That's not significant, to nine billion dollars in annual revenue. And that's looking at the total company, okay? We operate individually as individual profit and loss centers. A good quarter is a good thing, nothing wrong with that, for a corporation our size. But on a local level, that contract we lost was an eight-million-dollar annual contract, and obviously, eight million dollars to Lorraine County, to the Lorraine County landfill. And obviously, there was some profit made in that eight million dollars that's gone. And if we continue, and that's why we've asked for a temporary, what I call temporary, through two thousand and twelve, reduction in the fees so that we can remain competitive in northeast Ohio. We currently employ about four hundred people in Lorraine County, and those jobs are affected directly by whether or not we're competitive. So, we can watch those jobs go away and no longer be competitive, and lose these contracts like the city of Cleveland, which is the single largest contract in northeast Ohio. We lost that because of fees. We lost that by less than a dollar per ton. So, we're asking for the fee reduction only through two thousand and twelve to be revisited at that time, so that we remain competitive and hopefully, hopefully profitable. These corporations don't exist without making money, whether it's locally or whether it's on a national level. And I would hate to see us get smaller in Lorraine County. We're probably the only company that I know of in Lorraine County in two thousand and nine that despite switching to automation in many of our residential contracts, we may be the only company that added twenty jobs in two thousand and nine. Maybe. But we did grow, and we want to continue that growth and not see ourselves get smaller.
I have a question for you. The clerk just gave me a copy of the proposal that you had dropped off, and one of the bullet points says, "A ten percent discount to all Lorraine County residents on the posted gate rate for all solid waste self-hauled to the landfill." What exactly does that mean?
That means anybody that comes in in their pickup truck, or trailer, or car, or whatever they come in to the landfill with, as they do. We have a drop-off area for them to use, local residents that want to clean out their garage, or whatever they want to do. And we have an area for them to use, and what we've offered is a ten percent discount to all Lorraine County residents for that.
Okay, I wasn't sure what that was. Well, we only have one copy of this, and none of us have seen this until right now, so we're going to have to get copies and give us all a chance to
I understand.
digest it, so.
I understand.
That's all the questions I have for you right now. Anybody?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kroschenko?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Mayor Tony Kroschenko with the City of Lorraine, two hundred West Erie Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio. I'm here this morning, we received notice of the intent to adopt or designate a solid waste facility per three forty-three oh fourteen of the revised code as part of the solid waste plan. And from the city of Lorraine standpoint, and I'm not sure, because it almost sounds like what Mr. Kitter was talking about is not what was advertised as what the intent was with the designation of facilities. The designation of facilities, as I saw, and perhaps we could get some additional information, was designating a facility where in-county solid waste generated shall be disposed of in that designated facility, essentially eliminating competition, but definitely locking in all solid waste to go to the designated landfill, and as which would also continue to generate additional dollars based upon the tonnage coming in. So, I'm interested in knowing whether we're talking about a fee restructuring where it's lowering the out-of-county tipping fee, which I think is different from what was contemplated in this resolution, or if we're talking about designation of the in-county landfill designation for exclusivity.
Jerry, can you address that question?
Perhaps we should explain what's occurring here. What's under consideration right now, first of all, is a preliminary designation. We have had providers submit proposals to us. We only have received one, is that right, Dan? We only received one proposal?
Um, I haven't seen that.
Okay, well, it's my understanding we only received, okay, I guess that would have gone through. We only received one proposal. By doing this designation, preliminary designation, we would then authorize, similar to picking an architect, where you get a list of people, and then you evaluate them and rank them and pick a priority for considering them. Since we only have one, that's going to be a very short process. We then come back to the Commissioners again to consider negotiating a contract with that entity. And then after that, there's yet another thing where we come in and do the final designation if we're able to reach an agreement with them. So this is just the first step of at least two more opportunities that the Commissioners have to consider that. Now, as part of, and I'm not the world's expert on it, we have a couple of people in solid waste that are guiding me, but there's a couple of things that you can obtain by doing that, this designation, and that is having better control as to where the waste from the county is disposed. You can set it up so that it is disposed exclusively here in Lorraine County at that landfill. There is a waiver process that people can get to go outside the county, but the point is, is that the Commissioners get better control over where that's done. In the process of negotiating that contract, we can get involved with negotiating a change in the fees that Republic pays to the county, and that's where that comes into the equation there. It's not guaranteed that that's going to happen, that's just part of that process. And that could, and obviously, that's why Republic was encouraging it to occur, but that's not the sole reason that it's happening. This designation here wouldn't be the final thing that would happen. We would go through a negotiation process and then come back for a final approval that, again, you would get notice of, but it is possible a change in those fees would be part of that process.
Okay. And again, like, same as Mr. Ennis, although I've had the painful duty of having to read some of the information and deal with trash hauling contracts. It is not my expertise. But it does raise some concern for the city of Lorraine, as I would think it would for the city of Aleria, as we're still in the midst of trying to determine trash hauling contracts volume-based versus how we currently do it, as well as the city of Aleria, where we're still potentially seeking competitive bids. And the concern from the city of Lorraine would be that anything that would give exclusivity that all in, that all solid waste generated by the city of Lorraine must then be dumped at Lorraine County landfill, may stifle competition from haulers that we were trying to at least get to come in and solicit bids to the city of Lorraine for trash hauling contract, as well as the city of Aleria, which would also look at, although it seems logical that they would dump it in-county for transportation purposes, you never want to create a monopoly where that's the only place they could dump their solid waste refuse. So I wish that they, or would recommend that the Commissioners weigh this carefully and make sure that we're covering all the bases to make sure that we're not eliminating competition just for the sake of generating the fee. We all know how important, how useful the fee has been for reducing the amount going into our landfill, but we also need to consider whether it is going to stifle competition for cities such as Lorraine that is still in the midst of a trash hauling contract bidding process, or even Aleria that may be seeking to obtain prices for dumping their refuse in other landfills. And the only other question I had was, and it's kind of in a gray area, is when a hauler would, potentially say, an outside hauler would come into Lorraine and obtain our contract if they were hauling our waste to another landfill outside of the county, for whatever reason, are they still paying an in-county rate even though they're taking it outside of the county? And how would, and how would this affect that current situation?
I think we, I spoke with Mr. Billman this morning, so I might get together with you before we got started in the meeting, so.
Snow got me this morning, sorry.
Yeah, I understand that. Dan, can you answer that question directly, please, like we spoke to prior to the meeting?
There is a process to where the Commissioners, if they do the designation of the landfill to Allied Republic, you could offer a waiver to the company that comes in, okay? That waiver could include the two-dollar fee that Allied Republic currently pays us for everything with inside the county. So, we could still have the two-dollar fee coming from another company that's taking it out of the county.
But currently, if a competitor came in and hauled it out of the county, there is no two-dollar fee, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that was a confusion last night, ma'am. I'm sorry. I said it was nine o'clock, and I thought my plan here.
If the city of Lorraine took their garbage elsewhere, they would about cripple our district, wouldn't it?
Not if the two-dollar fee was imposed. You gave, you have the ability, if the designation goes through, to collect the two-dollar fee under a contract with whatever company comes in. And it would not cripple us, but it would bring our fee structure down that we collect from Allied Republic to some degree. Was it going to cripple us? No.
No.
Did I answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, and it would bring up the issue that, again, if that were instituted, that we would have to go through a special circumstance if an outside hauler were to come in and be able to offer our residents a lower cost, but our refuse would be going to an out-of-county landfill. We then have to start to weigh cost-benefit options, because, you know, as you know, our council did not adopt a volume-based trash hauling contract, so we will essentially, for all intensive purposes, be cut out of solid waste grant funding, and for our residents to pay that additional two dollars per ton that would go on to their fees and be passed directly on to Lorraine residents, and not receive any additional benefit, or be guaranteed that benefit of those solid waste dollars coming back into the city would be an unfair fee passed on to citizens of Lorraine, unless we were either getting the solid waste money to be able to reduce our fees, or be able to enjoy the savings brought on by competition, even though it's taking our solid waste outside of the county. Either way, it adds life to the landfill. So, I just wish you to consider that when considering this resolution. And if you would, I'd be more than happy to sit down and discuss it further with you, and you know, obviously have some input before the Commission would make a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Ed Nyger. I'm currently a township trustee, soon to be permanently retired. Our problem in our township is the fact that a lot of our residents are having a lot of trouble with allied waste. I set up a line with people to call the township, and we've had over thirty, probably forty, calls from individuals complaining of problems with allied waste. And inasmuch as acting like a monopoly, we've talked to other people, and our residents are currently calling Mr. Gentili at the Attorney General's office. And he has, we just recently received a letter from Rumkey, who has been designated by the Attorney General to come into Lorraine County. They have a landfill that's outside of the county, but they would be willing to come in as soon as they straighten out the amount of equipment, areas, and things that they have acquired because of monopolistic allied waste. Republic was to give up so much of their territory, and they had, Rumkey purchased it, and they're in the process of integrating that into their system. And hopefully, they'll be able to come into Lorraine County and at least give our residents an option to go to a different waste hauler if they so choose. We also told them that we would be glad to have them come in, but they would have to solicit their own customers. We were told by Metro they needed fifteen hundred. I don't care what the numbers are, just give us an option. Because there are a number of elderly people that are having trouble just with the toders. We had one lady call the township. She fell over her toter, taken it back, and almost broke her wrist. So, I don't know where this is going to head, but I wish you would consider that. Also, that there is another waste hauler that has been, from what I understand in a letter, been ordered to come into Lorraine County by the Attorney General's office. So, Mr. Mayor, he's still here? No, he took off. I was going to tell him.
He's in the back.
He's still back there?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you may have, you may get an option. Hopefully, if you would, I can speak with you and probably give you Rumkey's telephone number, and you can speak with them directly. They can tell you a little bit more about it. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak about, another township trustee?
Well, John's coming forward. I just wanted to tell you, I was attacked by my garbage barrel too, but I didn't break my wrist. But I learned what I can't do. You can't move the thing with the lid down. You've got to close the lid, but it's all a learning experience.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. John Puenzky, New Russia Township, and that's where the landfill is located. For those that don't know, it's part of our stuff here. And I'm not really going to speak into the competitive thing as of yet, but I think what we need to look at is where we're at in the solid waste district itself, the policy committee, the fee structures, where they have the monies that's generated from there to the grants to the communities, which may be in jeopardy. Also, with that, I do believe that we should look at some of the out-of-county waste, and maybe it's not a bad thing, excuse me, to take a look at that. Because what's going to happen with the amount of out-of-district waste that we get right now that will actually take up timeframe from the space at the landfill we currently have, which space at the landfill we currently have, which is, when that is done, it'll, long-term, will turn us to maybe an alternative where we would have to haul again out of county and increasing the cost to our residents. So those are two of the issues that we really need to address. And I don't know where the policy committee is on this, and I'd like to hear from somebody from there if we could. And let's see, and you do have the right to reject and accept any proposals that you do have, even though you only have one. And that if it is a waiver included in this and it's negotiated, you may not get your $2 anyhow, it's a negotiated proposal. So those are things that came to mind as this hearing today. And any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Well, your trustees reduced the fee for allied, correct?
Yes, we did. We do have a temporary right now. When we set up our negotiation, we went August 1st. We do have a reduction in place that is through the end of this month here. In contingent upon what happens here at the county with their fee reductions.
And your reduction is what?
It was 54 cents a ton.
And it's, now it's what?
Well, that was the reduction we had. We had 154 in fees. Reduction was back to $1. And that has definitely made a change. And it'll also make a change here as they talk about jobs and, and what have you. Our, the reduction is given by the county and the township, if it stays and continues, may result in us doing what they don't want to do. If they don't want to take and lose their jobs, it may affect some of ours, primarily solid waste district and maybe in our fees, our employees. So I think we need to take a real good, hard look at that. But I want to leave that out. That's, to me, is a separate issue as far as our contract that we have with the landfill.
But as far as your township, you're in favor of the fee reduction for the county to also give a fee reduction?
No, we, we didn't want to give the fee reduction.
You didn't want to give the.
No. We, it was negotiated through a contract that we have.
So you're not in favor of the fee reduction?
No.
Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, I just, we did it as part of a good faith effort in our contract. And we do have a clause in our contract that is, they can come and request a reduction in our fee due to an economic hardship. And as far as the economic hardship, we didn't see a total impact, but their case in point was only based on fee structures of competition in other landfills. There was no other issues in regards to the bottom line that you've talked about and, and so forth. It was based, all based on fee structures of landfills. Which, and I'm sure you guys probably haven't had the opportunity as commissioners, or we hadn't trustees of them asking requests before they had competition. And that's why I think it started in the reduction process. That's just a personal opinion. That's not a board, the board's opinion there, but no, we do, do see that we were based on their request out of our contract and negotiated only based on fees from other sites. Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioners.
Jerry, this proposal that we received from allied, it is a proposal and it is something that if we go through with this resolution, that we could counteroffer this proposal, or?
Right, there's a, a negotiation process that goes, so you're not approving that proposal if you go forward today?
I don't, I know I'm not in favor of proceeding today. I didn't even have a chance to review this and.
Well, if, if, when we were done with the comments, I was gonna explain to you your options as to how to proceed.
Is there anyone else that wanted to comment about this proposal, this public hearing? Okay, Jerry.
Okay. Since this was a preliminary designation, we did not opt to invite Mr. Greenberg or Mr. Bauer, who was the attorney I'm working with to prepare these documents, because of the cost involved in bringing them here. That's always an option if the commissioners want to continue the comment, we could bring them here to comment further. So one of your options is just to continue for further comment. There's no time limit on this. Your second option is to close the public comment and then just take this decision under consideration. And you could come back next week or the week after and, and decide. Your third option is to go forth and with the designation today. But again, even that is a preliminary designation. And the next thing that would happen is, again, normally we would have ranked and evaluate proposals. Since there's just one, that would be a very short process. But the, the next step in the process would be to sit down with Republic and go through the process of negotiating the terms of the agreement. And then we would come back a subsequent time to the commissioners to see if you want to approve that agreement and make a final designation. So, we've got three options to continue for further public comment, close the public comment, but defer a decision, or go ahead with the decision today.
I would be in favor to not close the public comment and have Mr. Greenberg and the experts on this discuss it with us further because, like Mayor Kraschinko said, this garbage is not my expertise and these type of contracts are, are not. And I'd like to hear from the attorneys involved. It's up to my fellow commissioners what they would like to see.
Excuse me, Commissioners, can I get a copy of that proposal, please?
As soon as we do.
Thank you. I'd like to send it, I'd like to send it to Rumkey's. So that they, maybe they'll have an, an idea or put in a proposal. Pardon me?
Sure.
We can get that too.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to set a date certain? I, I think it would be more appropriate than going through, and, and we have some rather important, not that this is not important, but some important things ahead of us today, and I think we need to go through our budget hearings before we address this issue more fully. That would be my suggestion. Is that in agreement with you, Commissioner Kaylo?
Sure.
Well, do we want to do it on December 22nd, or do we want to go until January?
I think we can wait until January. When we're done with our budget hearings.
Excuse me?
When we're finished with our budget hearings.
Okay, so, let's go with. Well, not actually officially meaning till January 20th, so we can do... January 26th would be our fourth Tuesday? We could do it on Tuesday, or we could do it the 20th?
No, on our budget meeting day.
On the 20th?
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
I concur.
Mr. Kaylo, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it's fine.
So, so the motion then would be to continue this for further public comment to January 20th at 9:45?
9:45.
That'll be, that's fine. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Skowski?
Aye.
Ms. Flair?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Do we have to close the public hearing? Motion, no?
Well, we're not closing it. We're doing.
Continuing, extending it? Or we are not closing it? Okay.
Did, um, just so I can clarify, all of you from the public entities or the private citizens who are here for this hearing today, you will not get another notice and there won't be another advertisement. So just so you're aware, the, the further proceedings will be January 20th at 9:45, okay?
Okay.
Can I get this to, you can get a copy of Mr. Nyger?
Yeah, leave that on.
Is that the envelope?
Yeah.
We'll go into our budget hearings. First one is Mr. Teller, Treasurer.
Morning, Dan. Thank you for your patience.
Good morning, no problem. I noticed that there's this statement, "The first shall be last and last shall be first." I hope you're not really going into that if I'm the first one talking about the budget. And secondly, I want to thank you very much for us being first. I want to get out to Cleveland Stadium for the tailgate this morning.
Oh, boy, it's gonna be cold for that.
And then right after that, you can all lock me up, so. I, you received the papers you asked for about the budget, the ones from last week, and you can compare them to what we did on May when we turned in the budget for May. And if you noticed, on the, on the payroll side, on the salary side, it's almost to the penny of these, the employees that we have under. There's no increase in there with any amounts of monies, no extra employees. This is what we're asking for. Do you have any questions?
Dan, is that what you exactly explained there?
That's exactly, as of, we made this in May, and then you asked, as of November 20th, I believe, what was the salaries? And if we would project that into 2009 without any increases, without any extra employees, that's exactly the same figure.
So you're all frozen then?
That's, we're frozen right there.
I have a question for you, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
Go.
Is there any ability anywhere through fee increases or anything else to increase any of the revenues? As I've been talking, I don't know if you saw anything we did last week, and the auditor stepped up first, so he was sort of like the guinea pig through this process. After all the one-time moves we're making, Mr. Cordez, if you want to maybe sum that up, our one-time moves on budget this year towards savings?
Well, we made a couple moves. One of them was the healthcare premium holiday, which alleviated some of the deficit for 2009. Approximately between the, the jail quarter percent and the half a percent to the general fund will take a burden off of around $1.5 million. So that, that was helpful because we, we had a shortage there. We've also been reworking some advances and bringing those back. You know, the biggest one we're, we're working on is the workers' comp to go self-insure. We won't see any benefit till 2011 from that because you're a year in, in, in the arrears with paying workers' comp. We, uh, we have a lot less money, so we're taking a lot more risk with, with some of the things that we need to do. And, and really good times, you wouldn't, you wouldn't accept these type of risks. But we don't have a choice right now. So that's giving us some additional funding there. But we're still gonna be short. And the other thing is, we won't have the ability to do that again in 2011, which will create an additional deficit going into 2011. While I'm reworking the healthcare contract right now, and I'm going to be recommending additional acceptance of risk to limit our reinsurance cost, which last year were about $950,000. I, I've looked at our loss ratio to claims, to cost of the insurance, and I believe that we can accept and tolerate a lot more risk and maybe drive down the cost by about a half a million dollars. I had spoken to the board about that earlier this year. But because of some, some difficulties, we had transferring money and how late it got into the year, we weren't able to, to get the outcome we desired for this year. So we may see some additional savings there. But, but healthcare is rising about 13% a year for the groups that are managing well, and we're in that trend. So any savings we have will only keep us par, so that won't really give us any relief going into 2011. I'm hoping for a par, par year. So as Commissioner Kaylo has talked to me, he's, he's worried about these one-time fixes, just like we've done for transit. We always get these one-time fixes and we don't have a long-term solution. And I think you were, you were wanting to smooth out some of those things over the, the next two fiscal years rather than just one.
My anticipation, and since you're our revenue guy and investment man, is the concern is being, we're approximately $3 million in the hole this year going into next year. And we're going to also be at least that next year plus inflationary costs, Dan. I guess that would be the easiest way of explaining it. If we take a lot of these one-time hits now, like the shutting down of transit, the healthcare, things that can't be duplicated ever again, my concern is being in 2011, since we can't do anything on increasing revenues for general fund, is we will be looking at, you know, three to three and a half million dollars in straight cuts next year. Unless you anticipate a big revenue upswing for me, that I haven't heard about yet.
No, I don't think that horse is coming in and, uh, we could put, there are two, for the last three years, just for your information, for the Commissioners Association, that the, the County Treasurer Association has tried to raise the fees that are collected by the treasurer and the auditor. Those fees go into the county general fund. For the last three years, nothing's been done about that. It's been lost in space down in Columbus.
The state legislature.
The state legislators.
Okay, not the County Commissioners Association, okay.
But if we could all get together and work on that, that fee structure's not been changed since 1956.
That was the year I graduated from my school.
Now we know why the problem is, but, but 1956. And it, it would generate funds for the general fund. Ted, I believe you might have been at the meeting I was at about two years ago, three years ago. We, when we had the Kent State Mathematics Department even worked on it to make it more of a fairer. If you do just a straight percentage, type of percentage, the big counties get richer, the middle counties get a little more, and the smaller counties don't. It was a formula to make everybody happy and everybody get a little bit increased. And it was for the general fund, not for the treasurer, not for the auditor. And that's been tied up by the legislators. I, I know, I know two years ago, we made $8.3 million in investment earnings. Last year, 5.8, and by the skin of our teeth, we're gonna make 2.9. The only change I made of the budget that I, that we made in May was I reduced the investment earnings down to 1.9. That's a heck of a, there's when people talk about all this excess money that we used to have, well, there's our investment earnings just getting massacred.
What, what did we get about three years ago? We were at an all-time high.
Eight million, $500,000 went to 5 million, I think, 300,000, and then it just.
And, you know, the public keeps asking
Five eight.
where the money went. It didn't go anywhere. We just didn't get it.
No.
I mean, they say, well, what, where did you spend it? Why don't you have it? When we're on the tail end of the yield curve like we are right now, and with the prime rate being so low, I, I, I don't know if you would agree, but I'm not seeing any end in sight in getting a better yield anytime soon.
No. Due, due to the TARP, due to the TARP money, the banks do not want our money. And then if banks do need the money to borrow it, they can go to, to the feds and they get it for free. Current, last year, a lot of times, we could get maybe a 2% CD or something like that to put our money in. The best investment we have is at .30%. Star Ohio, which is the big conglomerate of all the local governments putting their money into the state fund, is paying a whopping 0.12. And that's, and over the years, we use, could brag, the treasurer's office could brag about all the money that we were able to generate for the county because this was money that the commissioners then didn't need to pass any taxes on. Because this was additional funds.
Yep.
Well, unfortunately, this isn't the case, and I do not see that happening in the following year.
The, the also, since we've been spending down the reserves and the carryover, also decreases the amount available for investing, which has a negative impact
Well, the portfolio is shrinking, correct?
Right. You know, and we've been trying to explain this to people. And sometimes they just don't get it, so if, if we're asking questions that seem simple, it's more for the edification of folks that don't normally get to talk about this or hear us talk about it.
Well, if I just may add to that, I interrupt you.
Please.
The two years ago, when we heard all this $15 million of extra money in the county, and that two years, local government money has shifted due to the population, and the county general fund has lost $3.5 million each of those years. And if you start minusing out those figures I also mentioned, the total comes to $14.9 million we've lost in two years. Voila, your 15 million bucks.
Thank you.
And that's hard sometimes to explain. It's not that it's been and over managing, there's just been the loss of the revenue.
Correct. And.
And then multiply that with the fact that sales tax is down.
The sales tax is down?
Two and a half million, abouts?
And expenses are up. My question being, Dan, though, do you have an idea of what, if any, is gonna be returned to the general fund this year from your department that we can expect? I ask the question of everybody.
Look at his budget. My God, there's nothing there.
I know that, but I'm gonna ask the question of everybody else I have. You can tell me no, Dan, if it's a real simple.
I, I could double-check some of the figures, but currently I could not tell you that, answer that question.
He doesn't have much to bring back.
I know that, Dan.
There's some pencils we've received that from solid waste we could turn over to you guys.
But I gotta ask it of everybody.
It's, it's just important to continue to hear, especially from the other officials that deal with the finance. We heard from the auditor last week, we heard from the treasurer this week, that while not everybody agrees with all the policies over the, over the last few years, the money has not been spent. The revenue simply isn't coming in and available. And, and that's something that's not gonna change rapidly. And that's something that's not going to change rapidly. We were already at a very low tax base. And, Dan, you know where, what are we, second from the bottom on inside millage?
The eighty-eight counties in the state of Ohio, which have the inside millage, which probably doesn't mean a lot to most of you, but this is unvoted millage that can go to the county general fund. Out of eighty-eight counties, we have the eighty-seventh lowest, and that was set by the Constitution.
And we're the ninth largest county. So, you know, you start coupling all these things together, and you start coupling together the fact that before the commissioners put the half a percent tax on, we were at the bottom rung in sales tax in Lorain County. I think there was only two or three that were.
I believe there's only maybe two or three that were lower in the sales tax than Lorain County, and maybe about three at the same figure.
So, you know, couple that with the inside millage, the decrease in revenue, the loss of local government, the loss of investment income, you know, it was a disaster waiting to happen. A lot of people, we talked about it for a number of years, but, and we tried in two thousand and seven, the answer was no. We tried in two thousand and nine, the answer was no. You can't run, can't run something on nothing, and we're getting pretty close to that.
The sales tax was needed, and it took a lot of fortitude to put that on. I mean, if people can go to Cuyahoga County and pay a dollar and a half more for every hundred dollars you're spending, and that's what's going to happen after the sales tax goes, goes off in April to keep that well-funded Cuyahoga County government running efficiently, God bless you.
Well, and then you've had to do certain things, like switching banks that you've had for a number of years because of fees that they were charging, and that's kind of what we have to do across the board, is look at those types of issues.
We've had to change banks, and very seriously, for all the years that I've, the twenty-odd years I've been county treasurer, and this year, just, we're going to blow our own horn here, we went over a hundred million dollars in investment earnings this year. And that spent, that mornings were spent, every, going over to Mark Stewart's office, checking the warrants that were being spent, comparing them to revenue that we've taken in, finding out the difference and investing that. And that's what I spent most of the mornings doing. Everybody believes we just collect taxes, that's not necessarily true.
And for the first time, you did something creative, and more creative, with the bond. I'll teach you to pick on me about the idea from my school.
Later on, we're getting the barrels these days in Alaria. She's going to come over and show me how to use one where I don't kill myself, but go ahead, Betty.
You're issuing the bond in-house.
Yes.
Tell about that. I think that's really something creative.
There's one point three million dollars worth of a bond on some sewers that need to be done, and unfortunately, a lot of people, when they want to buy these bonds, either they're a company or an investment, they'd like non-taxable bonds. But through to the situation that we're in, they are taxable bonds, so nobody wants them. So talking with Dennis Yakobozzi from United Merrill Capital, talking with our bond counsel, it was decided that if the county treasurer purchased those bonds, since we are a government agency, so whether it's taxable or non-taxable does not hurt, and that we would have it for five years, we could save the county with all the legal fees and all the stuff that has to be done when you bond out money, save approximately two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Dan.
So we are pretty proud of that.
We're saving about two hundred thousand, and the yield on those bonds?
Six percent interest.
I like that.
So we're buying up our own paper, which is secured because it's a revenue bond. So it's some of the most secure paper you can have. And before, we didn't have it in our portfolio, so it's good paper, and it'll generate some nice revenue for us and decrease cost. And a couple people have talked about seeing how much money the county has because we have all this money invested, and they don't understand, like, you've got eighty-five million dollars, and, you know, I read that report, and the treasurer's got it, and he's got it over here, and he's got it over there. Could you help us explain?
According to Ohio Revised Code, which was, it was changed about ten, twenty years ago because of somebody going rogue, remember that, ever heard that word before? All the monies in the county treasury has to be, that is invested, all the interest goes into the county general fund. There's only two, two possibilities that it cannot be. One, if it's metropolitan park money, the interest made on that money has to go to metropolitan park. And if the county commissioners feel that the motor vehicle money, which Attorney Billy Joe Brown ruled on Attorney General's opinion back in the eighties, that a motor vehicle money, if the county commissioners would pass a resolution, the interest on that money could go back to the motor vehicle. The rest of the money, whether it be Met Park, not Met Park, any of the other monies that we have, whether or not it's MRDD, whether it's the court systems, any money that comes into the treasury, a dog licenses that come in, all that money has to come in, we invest that money, and all that interest goes to the general fund. It's by statute, Ohio Revised Code, section one thirty-five.
And the commissioners did pass a resolution when to have the motor vehicle gas tax go back to the engineer's office?
That's back when Mrs. Blair was in high school, yes.
The, oh, I could, but I won't.
You better not.
The, and, you know, so the portfolio of investment that people keep talking about, the commissioners having these tens of millions of dollars stashed away, and why don't they use that? They're not our dollars. You're responsible for investing them and monitoring them, taking care of them, but they're not the general fund dollars, and they're not the commissioners' dollars to use for general fund services.
Generally speaking, that's correct.
Okay. You know, a lot of people out there think you guys got tens and tens of millions of dollars socked away because they look at that investment portfolio, and they, and they think that that's commissioners' cash. And then hearing it from somebody else may, may give a little bit more validity to what we've been trying to say for a while on that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dan.
Don't we talk about the border revision?
Let's think about fifteen seconds to employees.
Well, I, as chairman of border revision, I'm really representing Mrs. Kokowski and Mr. Stewart, since there are three of us involved in that, and very simply, it's the very same thing. I filled out the forms that you asked. There are two ladies working down there. This past year, we had over two thousand border revision cases due to the fact that many people felt that the values were, should have been lowered. Unfortunately, down in Columbus, one of the, one of the cuts they did down there to the Board of Tax Appeals, out of fourteen employees, they have three left. So anytime anybody's now wanted to appeal those cases, that if you feel the border revision didn't do you right, you can either go to Common Police Court in, here in Lorain County, or you can go down to the Board of Tax Appeals. Board of Tax Appeals is sending everything back up here to the border revision. Due to the fact that there's a general, there was a triannual update, and I believe that the average, and I know you're not supposed to use the word average, that the values went down about six percent here in Lorain County. Just for everybody's interest, that six percent is probably only going to be one or two percent tax dollars. And when you come before the border revision, you have, you're there disputing the value of the property as a fair market value, no tax dollars. Dollars has nothing to do with it, just what the price of that property would be worth if you pounded a sign in the yard, and I drove by and we had an arm's length sale. Due to the fact that the economy has still not gotten any better, there is some talk that we're going to at least equal, if not double, the border revision cases we had this past year.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Well, now I'm going to bundle up and go to, yeah, like I will.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Hi, Judy.
Good morning, Judy.
And I'm not going to the game with him.
No.
You received my request for my salary and an explanation. We lost an employee in November who's still in the budget that you got because we had to report through November twentieth, a thirty-year employee who retired. So what I was asking, we laid off two people and one person last year. The gal that retired was our office manager. I'm not going to replace that position, and I was just requesting the twenty-one thousand to bring my management, which consists of four people, back up to their eighty hours, if you would see fit. They've been working seventy-two hours of a period down there. We have twelve, if you will, full-time employees, four are the non-bargaining that are working the seventy-two, eight bargaining unit, and two full-time on layoff. And that's where I'm at. We have one girl that runs our copy department, she is union, and when she's off, we close our copy department, so they have to go up front and wait for copies, so. And we have generated well above this year, which is surprising, some extra revenue. We had a law change in July that brought in about twenty-seven thousand dollars to the general fund.
Increases?
Yeah. Well, it wasn't an increase, Lori, it was kind of a penalty put on for non-conforming. And like Dan, I've traveled around the state extensively. This year, my term is up as president in our association. I was president and attended OCCO, and we have been asking the state for fee increases. We get shot down every time. You know, it's like, don't even go there. I think they're starting to listen to us a little bit, so we can bring, you know, be more maybe self-d esteeming, so we don't have to come back to you. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I think she hit all the points.
Did you receive any additional increases throughout the year?
No.
Stay within our budget?
I did.
There were some line items where you haven't used all the money.
Right, we're looking at that to try to give back. Absolutely. Yeah, we didn't even, if they weren't pencils, we brought them from home.
Good. Okay. Any questions, commissioners?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience, Judy. We're running a little bit behind.
Thank you, I understand.
Next, Ron Adkowsky, Clerk of Courts.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. At the beginning of two thousand and nine, Clerk of Courts Office laid off six deputy clerks that were paid from the general fund. This necessitated our legal division being put on short hours. We're now operating from ten o'clock to four-thirty, two hours closing the morning, so we don't have to deal with telephones or the counter. And because of that, we're only two and a half to three weeks behind in the civil work. We're keeping up with the criminal work, in part because the prosecutors have also laid off some people, and the criminal work isn't getting to us as fast as it used to. And we're pretty much even in the domestic relations side. Our deputy clerks have not had a salary increase since two thousand and eight, and they've endured a ten percent cut in pay for four months of this year. It was only with the implementation of foreclosure fund by the judges that we were able to bring them back to full-time, plus the six people that were laid off, and the two people that have retired.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Two people have retired. We've had two retirements plus the six layoffs, and that cut in pay.
And nobody's been brought back?
Cutting hours. We're net, no, we're net six, no. Nobody's sort of brought back. We've got two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from our budget with layoffs, cutting hours, and with retirements. We have over a thousand mandates from the General Assembly, and we're meeting a good percentage of them, but not all of them. So that, for reasons we cannot overcome, we probably are non-fecesant in some areas. The civil division has endured an increase in foreclosures since the layoffs of some twelve percent. And the banking figures now, people who are ninety days or more delinquent but not in foreclosure yet, is enormous. So we're looking for next year to be far worse than this year in terms of workload on the civil side.
Well, Ronnie, let me interrupt you there. Would an increase in the fees on the foreclosures again help out that situation? You raised it, what, two years ago?
You know, no, that's, that's allowed us to stay where we are. We'd be, we were far, when that increase went in, we were almost a month behind, more than a month behind. So we've been able to catch up a little bit with closing the hours, and, but, but again, the pressure is getting worse and worse.
Well, Ronnie, my question was, if there was a fee increase.
If we increased.
Foreclosures, would that help your problem in your civil?
Yeah, it would, obviously. But again, I think that you can only push those fees so hard, and we pushed that one. The judges pushed that one pretty hard, so. We are looking for, on this whole subject. Excuse me, I've got, whatever he's got, I guess.
Water? Would you like a glass of water?
Yeah, would probably help. The, there's House Bill Ten has passed. Our association has been actively working this year for an increase in court costs, fees that have not been raised for a long time, that are set by statute. Those will inure to the general fund. That bill has passed the House, it's been voted out of committee, it is in the Rules Committee in the Senate, so if your association, I'm sure your association is working on that, because there are some extra dollars there, which would be, for our place, the bet that you made, you helped us make on North Ridgeville has paid off, the title fund, and we've had a title fee increase. So on the title side, on the title side, we are doing better. We have plans to send a check for some fifty thousand dollars to the general fund for repayment of the expenses that you guys put out for North Ridgeville for the two years that, that we needed your help in that office.
We're getting fifty thousand dollars back this year?
Well, yeah, we're going to send you a check for fifty-some thousand, we're working on what exactly it is right now, so. We'll be catching up with that in the hopes that later on this year or next year, at least, we will have a profit that we can share with you, so you have some benefit from the title fund. We also, we, we don't make anything like Dan does, but in two thousand and eight, we had a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars in income, income, interest income. This year, we've taken some steps, and we are now, in fact, using part of our portfolio for federal agency bonds and improved, from some thirty basis points, point three percent was what we were making on cash and certificates of deposit, et cetera. We're now getting about one point nine six percent from federal agencies, so that'll help. But again, we're, our overall revenues are down about a quarter of a million dollars in our department, period, just because people are not paying as fast as they used to because of the economic conditions.
Jim, were you aware of the fifty thousand dollars that he was going to be bringing back to the general fund?
No, no, we haven't.
No.
No, nobody was aware?
We haven't talked to anybody. We've been working on that, trying to figure out the figure of it. I think somebody in my office has been talking to Lisa or somebody.
I have, it's the first I heard.
Been talking to somebody in your department.
It was a secret?
I know, I have a.
Oh, Yvonne.
Christmas present?
Yvonne in your department has to get us, is getting the figures for what you guys put out.
I have a major postage issue with the foreclosure department, and I can't pay for any postage passed today until I get some money.
How much postage?
I'm trying to work it out right now, but it's huge. It's in the tens of thousands.
Lisa and I are working on that next week. After this is all over, we're going to try to get together, because we do pay back postage, and so far this year, we've paid back over a hundred and forty thousand dollars. But for some reason, it goes back to the general fund and not necessarily to a postage account, so we're going to work that out, and if that account has to be changed, we can, Lisa and I are going to work on that.
I appreciate it.
We do pay it back, we collect those postage.
I thought you did. I, I was surprised to find out that we have no postage money today, and we're trying to backtrack through the issue. The, I'm a little concerned that we got paid into the general fund, and that's not your fault, obviously. Hopefully, we didn't move it someplace else when it came in as income in the general fund, and now we've got to sweep and take a look for it and get it into that postage account, because if it was a pay-in, Lisa, it may have been used other places, right?
Right. It probably was, it just went into these bank reports, according to our bookkeeper.
Not too much water left in that chamois.
Do you have more comments?
No, the budget is condition, discontinuing budget, so we'll continue to keep the shorter hours, and we'll call any other people back.
I do see that you were given a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a little over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars above what you were budgeted this year, and all that money came from the foreclosure fees?
Right, right.
Increases?
Right.
And are you anticipating needing additional dollars, and is that money going to continue to be available for you every year?
Yeah, we're collecting that as we spend it on a quarterly basis, so we'll be billing the judges, the judges will be doing that again, so.
Yeah, it's basically a pass-through from the judge's foreclosure accounts, it's not an additional general fund expense.
Right.
Okay. Well, Ronnie, you're a former county commissioner, so you're not left unhit to, where do we have any additional cost savings for next year, return to general fund? Based on, I think you were here earlier when we were speaking with Dan, the concern being, and you had tough budget times when you were here, we're doing some one-time moves to and you had tough budget times when you were here, we're doing some one-time moves to save as much as we can this year, but nothing towards the two thousand and eleven budget. You know, we're precluded from doing anything for revenue enhancement other than increased fees if the state allows us to. We're looking anywhere, anywhere three to five percent through all your line items. I mean, if you can go back and look through that, we'd appreciate any and all help.
Before I laid off a single person, I went through as much as we could. I mean, I.
No, he did.
There's some things we just can't cut, so.
I understand that. No, I'm just asking the question, though, Ronnie.
I believe highly that my personnel are my number-one priority as far as protecting them, and so we could protect them with every cut that we could think of, so.
Well, I had to ask the question, too, Ronnie. I said you've been in this position before, so.
You know, hopefully, we'll be able to give you some help from the title fund, and hopefully, the federal agencies will pay off, and that helps a little bit on the interest income side.
I have a question, regarding the title fund, because we never saw, did you see the uptick in regards to the cash for clunkers? Is that where you saw the uptick in your title funds?
No. Well, yeah, there was definite.
We didn't see it in sales tax. We were waiting for a spurt in sales tax and never saw it. And my thinking was that people were gonna buy washers and dryers or whatever else, bought cars, and we ended up at net zero in sales tax.
Could be, we did, our revenues went up. We could tell the effect of the clunker program. But again, that's right there, you know, our title fees fall off a cliff when November starts. November, December, January, and February are about seventy percent of the rest of the year, and the rest of the year was already down twenty, twenty-some percent from the previous year, because automobiles are in a funk. They're coming back a little bit, but again, we're in the worst four months of the year, so some of that, and the federal bureaucracy did not work very well, so the money came back pretty slowly to the dealers. So they brought the titles in kind of slowly, so. Okay?
Any other questions?
Thank you very much for coming today.
Thanks, Abby.
Comment, please. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's still morning, yes, it's still morning.
Good morning, Judge.
I'm going to turn the program over to Tim Lubier, administrator. We've been working on this for the last two weeks, so, Tim?
Commissioners, good morning.
I'll be more than happy to address any questions.
In anticipating some of your questions, I laid out some of the things that the court's been able to do over the last couple of years, primarily this year as far as implementing cost savings. You should have at your, at your hands the budgetary information that you requested for us, so we've already provided that as well. The court, one of the, one of the areas that we've been able to implement significant savings has been with respect to a centralized purchasing system. This has allowed the court to reduce duplication, cost, waste, storage. It's also allowed us to increase security and accountability. Another area that the court's been able to implement savings has been with respect to a postcard system for the courts. As I'm sure Mr. Cordaz can attest, the court spends a lot of money on supplies, everything from postage to paper to envelopes, all those things that's necessary for us to conduct our business. One of the things we were able to do was start using postcards. That's allowed us to decrease our consumables with respect to paper, as well as our consumables with respect to the postage costs, because postcards cost less than the normal envelopes. We've also engaged in an aggressive negotiation program with respect to all our court, our court vendors. Just a few areas include copiers, the legal publications, and the membership dues that the court has to pay. Another area that I'm, I'm happy to report a cost return to the general fund is in respects to a rolling program of purchasing our equipment versus leasing, and I've had some discussions with Mr. Cordaz in this respect. One of the things we've been able to do, as funds are available, we have purchased our copiers versus leasing, and over the next couple of years, this is gonna save us literally tens of thousands of dollars. So very happy in that respect. Another area that we were fairly aggressive in in returning some costs to the general fund is with respect to our printer utilization. We had a company come in and do a, at no cost, a assessment for our printers, and one of the things we were able to determine was that certain printers cost much more to utilize than other printers, and so we had a cost determination for every unit that we used. It resulted in us eliminating all personal printers throughout the offices, networking our existing equipment, and our per-page cost went down markedly. So again, another area that we're happy to report a savings. With respect to personnel, in the last ten years, no general fund employee, the court has not hired a general fund employee without the direct approval of the commissioners. Now, I would note for you that obviously the court is a separate branch of government, and we're not necessarily beholden to the commissioners for those approvals. Nevertheless, we have not, over the last ten years, in fact, I'm sure Judge Gilleski can speak to a term greater than mine, where we have not actually sought the approval of the commissioners to hire any new general fund employees. With that said, the court has been able to bring in eight additional employees over the last ten years. Those employees have not in any way been beholden to the general fund. Because of our increase in foreclosures, we brought additional personnel in for that department. We've been able to fund them out of fees. We've brought in just recently three probation employees that were, that are solely funded out of grants, and then our mediation department has again been fee-supported. So we're very proud in that respect. As a result of the funding decreases that the court experienced last year, we also had to, just like many of the other departments, lay off personnel and engage in a reduction in what are, we are paying our employees from an hourly perspective. That's still ongoing as we speak today.
How many employees did you?
We had to lay off two employees in our probation department, and we had to reduce the hours of our jury commissioners. As a result of that, those duties haven't gone away. Those duties are still the court's responsibility, so we've had to reallocate staff members, and in fact, judicial staff have to now go over to the probation department to assist them in still fulfilling their statutory responsibilities. I would note for the commissioners that we are the only justice department that does not have our own IT staff. We have relied on the commissioners' existing staff to fulfill that role, while I think we could justifiably, based on our needs and our users, acquire staff to fulfill our IT responsibilities. We've not done that, and so we're happy to report we've been fiscally conservative in that respect. As a result of the increased caseloads, which you heard Ron Navkowsky talk about, there has been a greater need for additional judicial officers. That can take many forms. That could take the form of a judgeship. The other, the other way that those responsibilities can be fulfilled is with the use of magistrates. What the court has done is to elevate or to appoint our existing staff attorneys to the role of magistrates. We've done that, and those individuals now are judicial officers. They are fulfilling all the responsibilities of a magistrate and allowing the judges to, in essence, we're getting two-for-one. That's, we've had no additional costs that have been passed on to the general fund as a result of that. So again, doing more with less. Right now, the court is in the process, we've actually developed, and we are in the process of implementing a, a court qualification program for our interpreters. You know, we're always conscious of looking at every line item and seeing where we can save money. One of the areas that we have determined that it's very expensive for the court is in the professional services account. That's an account that the commissioners like the attorney fee account supplements as needed for, by the court. It costs a lot of money to bring in interpreters to assist individuals who are injured in. It's not a choice that the court has. We have to provide those services. These professionals charge a lot of money. So what the court has done is looked at getting some local talents, some people who are qualified, we're still trying to ensure that they are qualified, but to go through a qualification program, have some local people come in and perform these services for the court at a reduced cost, while still maintaining the integrity of the process. So that's something that we are working towards as well. We have eliminated the use of outside court reporting services. In the past, when a court reporter was, was sick or on vacation, we would then pay an outside court reporting firm to come in and fulfill those duties and responsibilities. We've set up a pooling system so that if a court reporter's out, one of their peers comes in and performs those roles. Now, that's not without its problems, because that works provided that a judge is not in session. If a judge is in session, he needs his or her court reporter to perform those roles. So it's resulted in perhaps some decrease in our productivity, but we've weighed that against the costs that we're able to save. The other area that we've also saved with respect to court reporters has been in municipal cases that start at the municipal level, and there are, say, for example, recordings in a police station. Those recordings as part of the trial process have to be transcribed. In years past, the court has always hired outside court reporting agencies to fulfill that role. We looked at those costs and determined that we could do those cheaper in-house, and so that's been a, an additional role that our court reporters have assumed at no additional cost to the county.
While you're there, Tim, though, if I can, Commissioner Blair and I were at the Commissioners Association meetings statewide this week. They gave us a rough draft, the Ohio, let me get this right, judges.org was the website, Ohio Judicial Association, is that the?
Yeah.
They're working on some of the County Commissioners Association. I don't know if you've seen it yet. It was a rough draft of budget resource manual, and they were explaining to us, it's one of twenty copies, I got the last one, actually.
It's, yeah, it's a very thick document, yep.
Okay. And there was a judge there, let me get him, which one, because one didn't show, Jerry McBride from Claremont County, County Please, the gentleman was there?
Former commissioner.
Yeah, he was former county commissioner, actually, and he explained to us, you know, the whole budgeting process. Actually, half the counties in the state of Ohio do it by a journalized entry, where we always look at, is that negative? Half the counties do a journalized entry, a judge said, we need this much.
Sure.
But he said they've cut a lot of their costs to the digital video recording. Is that implemented? I know we've got that system.
We have a system. In all candor, that system has been not everything we would like it to be, to be honest with you. There's a, there's a number of different other products out there, and I, you know, as I'm sure you can appreciate, at the time that we constructed the Justice Center and engaged in, and hired some of the individuals that have provided the service to, for us, that's not gone as well as we would all have liked. And in that respect, we were kind of duped with respect to that, that system that we have in place, so it doesn't necessarily meet all our needs. There's a, we could spend weeks talking about court reporters and the use of court reporters versus digital recording. There's.
A question for you, too.
Yeah.
They kept referring to them as court stenographers. No difference, I'm assuming? Is there a difference?
There is a difference. I think that harkens back to some of the older traditional roles that the court reporters played now, particularly with respect to the ones that we have on staff. It's a much higher degree. When you're talking about court stenographers, some of those people literally would, back in the old day, you would have somebody that have a little mask over their face that would just basically.
You know, as he's talking, I'm talking.
That's it. There is, now, there's a greater need for what's called real-time reporting, which is a heightened professional standard that allows the judge real-time to hear what's going on, as well as counsel to perceive that, so that's something that you don't get with the digital system. There's, there's pros and cons. There's also an issue with respect to, just because you have the digital recording, you still gotta produce a transcript, so that doesn't eliminate those costs.
Well, that was one of the issues brought between the commissioners and this judge from County Please, and the lady from the Ohio Judicial Council, Mary Beth, I think was her name, Mary, Mary Ann, Mary Beth?
There's courts that have actually, over the last couple, the last ten years, have gone to complete digital systems, and now those courts are actually starting to go back to court reporters, because they found that it's not the panacea they thought it was. I will tell you, the judges, on a regular basis, review issues like that, and they consider where we can get cost savings. One of the ways they've been able to do it so far is the pooling of the court reporters. We've not found that eliminating that position would give us the cost savings against the productivity that we need. So yes, we consider that, Commissioner, and we'll continue to do so.
Those are just some of the points. Like I said, I haven't had a chance to read this resource manual as of yet, so.
The other thing, I liken this again to the court's use of not hiring an IT, outside IT department. We are working with the commissioners' existing web facilities to develop the court's website. Unbelievably important for us to have the public one-side information, and we're anxious to get it out there, and so it's result, obviously, your web developer has many responsibilities, so we've had to kind of take a backseat and wait for those resources to be available, but we've been patient and not gone out and hired our own resource to try to save costs.
I saw what you're doing, it looks pretty good.
Thank you.
Looks real nice.
Again, against cost savings, not only to the court, but to the public. The public expects to be able to have that information readily at hand, and we need to be able to provide it, so we're moving in that direction. Lastly, with respect to personnel, one of the things, and I, this isn't necessarily directly court personnel, but it is a, it's a cost that falls within the court, is our jury sharing. We spend a lot of money to pay to have the members of the community come in and perform their role as jurors. The judges are very mindful of the fact that anytime we have somebody come in and sit downstairs while, while we're waiting to try to resolve cases, that costs the court money. And so the judge, and in consideration of that, what they will do a lot of times is bring in, two judges will bring in one panel with the expectation that one of those cases won't go forward. Now, that saves us some money, because we haven't brought in two panels. We though, again, bumps up against our productivity and our ability to resolve two cases, because if both of those cases go to trial, it's very likely we're not gonna have enough jurors. So again, another way that we are trying to look at saving costs. I want to talk about some of the broad benefits that the court has been able to benefit to the general fund, and this kind of goes to, Commissioner, one of the questions you asked Ron Navkowsky earlier. In two thousand and eight, as a result of our special projects accounts, the court was able to return to the general fund through subsidies, one hundred-and-fifty-two thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. That was money that was split between the clerk's office and the sheriff's office. In two thousand and nine, we anticipate that we are going to, well, not anticipate, we will, in fact, the clerks are waiting for a check right now that will total this amount. A hundred, in two thousand and nine, we will return to the general fund, one hundred-and-ninety-thousand seven-hundred-and-four dollars.
Thanks, Judge. You told me you were the other day.
Now, Commissioner, here's the dilemma. You asked if we increased our foreclosure fees or some of our other fees, whether or not we can help out the clerk's office or the sheriff's office.
Or your own office.
Or our own office. Unfortunately, the answer to that is no, we cannot. We, one of the things that you, I would note for you is, in two thousand and eight, we gave funds to the sheriff's office. We didn't do that in two thousand and nine because of a recent Attorney General's opinion that came out in January or February of two thousand and nine, that basically foreclosed us, our ability to do that. The law is very, and in fact, we had to perhaps ask the prosecutor to engage in some tortured logic to get to where we were able to spend the money that we're able to spend now, and they can speak to it much more than I can, but we really can't push that law any further than we have. We are constrained by how we can spend that money. In fact, it's, the opinions are very clear, and they say, court-specialized project funds cannot be used to really subsidize the general fund. If it's a responsibility of the general fund, it is a responsibility of the general fund, and the court can't just go take those funds and say, we're gonna plug them in here. And we have perhaps pushed that beyond where the prosecutors were even comfortable allowing us to go, but we're where we're at now, and so.
Well, I've gotta ask the question, okay?
I really understand. And we would, if we can do that, we have done it, and we feel very proud that we've been able to assist the general fund to the extent that we have, in ourselves. But I want, I want to be very clear to you that there is, we cannot push that law any further than we already have.
Are there any other fees to any other type of funds that can be increased under Ohio Revise Code or allowed to?
We can increase the fees, we can't get the fees back out, is the problem.
Okay, it doesn't help offset any of your other expenses, because those accounts are all fine based on the fees currently?
Correct, yes. We could increase the fees, and there's, there's some constitutional limitations theoretically on our ability to do that, but even if we did increase those fees and generated additional revenue, the problem is getting that revenue back out to other, to other departments and even ourselves, because again, the, the law says you can't use specialized project, project fees to supplement or offset general fund responsibilities.
Right, not with the general, in regards to general fund, right? You've got like magistrate, you've got different things that you.
And we've been as creative.
Correct, I didn't know if any help in increasing any of those fees that are allowed by law.
No. Yeah, we've done that, and in fact, I will tell you, the judges wrestled with the increases that we've done to the foreclosure fees as it is, because those are attacks on the users. the users. And you can appreciate that these individuals who are having their houses taken from them don't have the money that the court is now assessing them more.
I thought the lenders were paying the fees.
Those, if there's-
The mortgage companies.
Ultimately, no, not at all. They may front those fees, but ultimately, when there's a judgment, that money goes back against the individuals. So that's, there's a severe repercussion for us doing this.
That's not what we were told when we passed it. They said, they told us that the mortgage company or the lender was paying those fees.
They paying them upfront, but ultimately, when there's a judgment, that judgment is against the debtor. And those are fees-
Most of those never get paid by the person that's been foreclosed upon because a lot of those cases, they either end up on a short sale with a 10-99C note or they file a bankruptcy of some sort.
That's very possible.
So they're never actually paid out of pocket.
I would agree. In the majority of cases, that's true because those people are walking away. But those individuals that either had some equity left in their house, that goes to pay those costs. Or if they're not able to declare bankruptcy, then they are on the hook for those fees. So I've talked about the amount of money that the court has been able to return to the general fund. We have, the court has been very active in respect to, as the commissioners can appreciate, the jail costs the county a lot of money. The judges have been very active with respect to the jail study. And Judge Betleski is on the Community Corrections Board. And we've taken an active role in attempting to reduce that existing jail population. We now have somebody over at the jail that alerts the court on a daily basis as to the individuals who are at the jail. And if we can get them out and put them on bond, the judges are doing that.
Right.
And you can appreciate, I'm sure, the, you know, everybody, you can't please all the people all the time. And so as the judges are left in the difficult role of having to juggle economic issues, they still have their responsibility to ensure the safety of the public. And so they continue to fulfill that role.
Nick, stop it there, Tim. Just sort of going, we went through that whole jail study in national justice. In my talking with Sheriff Stomidi since issue four failed, he said there were a multitude of different ways of trying to keep a handle on the bed count. Has he met with the judiciary yet to discuss?
We have meetings set up, yes.
Okay. He said he was going to, limiting a bed amount per judge or per type of-
We've actually implemented a couple of short-term things since the jail studies come out and we're continuing to tweak that. But one of the things we've determined is that you really have to have all the justice partners there. You know, it's great if Sheriff Stomidi is able to implement some things, but if we on the court side aren't cognizant of those, we're not able to kind of maximize that.
It should be in discussion because actually, one of the issues we talked about when we were in Columbus-
Yep.
Was the institution of the fifth degree felony and what it's done to jail population across the state of Ohio?
Correct. That's, I mean, what you were looking at is the legislature and their infinite wisdom, not the county commissioners, but the state legislature has mandated that certain crimes will have certain penalties. And so that takes the discretion out of the judges' hands and says, this is what we got to do. And that has a direct cost to our community.
Correct. They explained all that. Were something, I don't think, I know I didn't, I don't know about Commissioner Blair.
Yeah.
What the additional cost was based on that mandate. They just made up a new degree of felony.
Yep. Very expensive. One of the things we've done, and we recently came over to commissioners and asked for a tightening up of an old resolution, was we've instituted new protocols for injunitary attorney appointments. Again, that's a huge line item for us. Not an area that the judges truly have total control over, but to the extent that we've been able to ensure that those are reasonable and necessary funds, the judges do that. We have eliminated, or we, attorneys are technically entitled to mileage. The judges have said, we're not paying it. We have required a greater degree of itemization that lets us do a fuller scrutiny of those bills. So we're requiring the attorneys to do that. We've also reduced the cost that investigators are entitled to get. So again, big line item. Some of the things we're able to do are small, but we're committed to doing those.
And also, Tim, I'm just kidding, I'm not interrupting you. Since you're talking about things, things we do, Commissioner, what was the re-up on the injunitary fees? Then they raise their payback to us in the upcoming fiscal year?
About three, three or four percentage points.
Okay, we're supposed to get three or four percent more than what we're getting previously from the state. You had those numbers the other night, I didn't have when I got interrupted at the meeting.
It's still pretty far under what they're supposed to have.
Right.
Yeah, it's maybe thirty, it's going to be maybe close to thirty now.
About twenty-nine, thirty?
Thirty-eight, thirty.
Twenty-eight, thirty. Couple of years, 2012, I think, was thirty-eight they were projecting.
Yeah.
It was thirty-one or thirty percent, then thirty-four, and then thirty-eight over three-year. They just told us that, I said, Monday or Tuesday, you had it.
I'll get it.
We're supposed to get an increased reimbursement that the state has been not giving us.
And that's a huge line item for us, and you.
Let's point out the fact that the state has repeatedly failed to meet its obligations to counties with regard to injunitary attorney reimbursement. Their obligation under their own law is fifty percent. I think one year in the beginning, we received fifty percent and it's been declining and hovering in the twenties since then. And a few years back, I did a report. I should dig it out because I asked you guys if it was in a more comical way, we wanted to send the bill to the state, if you recall. We may have. I think it was, they owed us something like three and a half million dollars in their unreimbursed expense for those attorney fees. And that was, that was three or four years ago. So it would be nice if they lived up to the obligation. It ends up being a significant amount of money.
I'm not sure if I was paying full attention because I don't have the cent figure, but in 2010, it was supposed to be thirty-one dollars?
Thirty-one percent.
Percent?
Thirty-one percent.
Percent?
They pay a specific percentage. Can you remember the thirty-one number I left before?
Well, what do we have there? Thirty-eight point seven percent?
They're saying 2011, thirty-eight point seven percent. I thought they had another gap there. Yeah, thirty-one percent, I remember. But I, I think I left when they were going to that part. I don't remember.
Well, that's what you get for leaving and looking at my notes.
I'm sorry.
And the judges pointed out to me, Jim, one of the, that, there was a legislative change and what they did is said they will pay up to fifty percent. And so they lawyered themselves out of that one.
I see the judge smiling behind you. It's, they always lawyer their way out of things. But, you know, also I need to point out that we've had support from our representatives down there to ensure maximum return. But they've been unsuccessful. So our local legislators have been supporting us getting more reimbursement.
Yeah. As part of those protocols, one of the things I would also note for you that the judges have implemented a fairly terse timeframe that attorneys have to submit those fee bills to us to ensure that we get those down to Columbus and you were able to maximize that reimbursement from the state. If the attorneys fail to submit it within thirty days of the case's conclusion, those attorneys are now, cut whatever that reimbursement is. So that's something that we've also implemented. With respect to the attorney fees, I would also note for you that it has been the commissioners' policy in the past to, when necessary, supplement our attorney fee account. Well, we're out of money right now. We're not going to actually make it to the end of the year. One of the things we've done out of our currently existing funds is shifted twenty, in fact, the order's going on today to transfer $25,000 to that account that'll allow us to make it to the end of the year. So instead of us coming back to you and saying, we need additional funds, within our funds, we are making that happen for this year.
How do you look at your 2010? I mean, you've been very thorough. You know the whole system. How do you look at your 2010 under your current budget structure? As I've asked everybody else, is there a three-five percent savings anywhere?
Commissioners, I would love to, you know, I would love to say we could go to the magic special projects accounts and make this happen. I would love to say that we could squeeze our vendors for some more money. I can tell you this, we're anticipating that this year, we're going to give back approximately $150,000 to the general fund.
That's about three percent out of your overall budget.
Got it.
By my numbers, right? Your 4.95 million roughly.
That's real close, yeah. And, you know, the attorney fees is real tough to calculate because it subsidizes all three years. So I usually don't have that number.
And that, can you expound on where that 151 is coming from? Because I'm looking at your, you know, different line items and like supplies, you're way down in supplies and equipment. You haven't spent, you know, your budget in equipment. You've been way under in a lot of areas. And is that where that 150,000 is coming from?
That's where it's coming from. That we, because of all that stuff that I talked about earlier. Now, ultimately, if I have fifty thousand, if you, when you give me, typically, I think my line item for supplies is $50,000 for the year. If I implement a three percent or five percent savings in there, I'm not going to get $500,000.
Right.
But ultimately, I like, there's three numbers, last things that I want to give you and then I'll conclude. Lastly, three pieces of information that I want to share with you, I think goes to that question. In 2008, the court returned to the general fund over $72,000. In 2009, this is again in going into each year, in 2009, or going from 2008 to 2009, the court returned $172,858 to the general fund. This year, it is my hope that we'll be able to return about $150,000 to the general fund. Now, you may say to yourself, well, that reflects that the court's got some cushion and we can go ahead and just take that three to five percent away from you. I would caution you to do that and here's why. I think that those numbers reflect good stewardship by the court. They reflect fiscal conservativeness and that we never take funds that are available and either bonus out our employees or go on a spending spree. Whatever is not absolutely necessary for the court to function is returned to the general fund. And I would recommend that you approve our budget as it was submitted. And I thank you for your time.
I guess the question that I have, since your budget, you do have such a large budget and everybody took a 20% pay cut in the salary line items across the board and you were only, you only had to lay off two people. Did you have special funds to make up that 20%?
Some of it, and again, my point was, some of that changed as a result of the recent law. So what we were able to do in 2009 is not what we're going to be able to do in 2010. We've got a recent Attorney General's opinion that said, you can't spend the money that way. And so we stopped.
So in 2010, are you going to have to have additional layoffs?
That depends on the budget the commissioners give us. In all candor, we actually didn't get a 20% pay cut. We got a twenty, across the board, with the funds that we got from the commissioners, from 2008 to 2009, we actually got a 25% pay cut. So we actually didn't get a 20% pay cut last, in this year, we got a 25% pay cut.
Well, you don't mean, you don't mean a pay cut, you mean a budget reduction.
Budget reduction, yes.
Okay.
So, yes. So we were able to absorb that because of what we were able to do with special projects in 2009. That's not something we're going to be able to do this year.
How did we get to 25%?
Good question. I think mathematically, the mistake that was made when we received our budget this year was to take a number from 2008 that was not actually our salary account. It was, it was the budget that was allocated in the beginning of 2008, not what we actually, because as you recall, the court had to come to the commissioners at the end of 2008 and ask for additional funds. So, so the funds that we were actually given did not reflect that. So there was a greater-
It was your 2008 original appropriation, not your 2008 expenditure.
Correct.
Correct. It's how we did everybody. I mean, it wasn't just you especially. Everybody was done that way.
So, so in reality, I mean, I just want to be clear, we didn't, our reductions across our salary budget in 2009 wasn't 20%. It was actually 25%.
I recall, we used the baseline that we started with.
Yes, the appropriation, not the expenditure.
And depending on how those other departments were prior to that, maybe they were better off than us. We were, that was a significant cut for us.
If we froze your budget for next year, are you going to have to lay off people then?
That's not my prerogative. What will happen is, once you, if you give us the same budget as you gave us in last year, it's going to result in the court having to make some significant decisions. I personally, today, don't know where those funds are going to come from. There will have to be some reductions in the court. It's the judge's prerogative to figure out where we're going to get those and we will have to have some extensive meetings. But, you know, you know, one of the things, the judge just references the fact, we may have to cut jury fees. You know, that may mean that jurors don't get money. And that's something that the court's very hesitant to do. I mean, these people are coming in at a significant-
Yeah, I need to point out, we also make them walk a half a mile now as it is.
I took that out of my, that's another area. I mean, you, if we're talking about true numbers and true cuts that the court has absorbed, that's a service that's no longer available. So the value of that, you add that in there, too, and that's a true service or a true loss to our budget. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have you listed to break down 4D separately and then the rest of the general fund budget. In the packet that we sent over, and specifically the cover letter, it addresses the 4D salaries for this coming year. It's an allocation of salaries in the amount of 457, 400 and the PRS allocation of $64,036, which is a total of 521, 436. And that's less than the original amount of 4D salary budget that was provided last year. Last year was 541, 053. We've been very aggressive and Mr. Corey's been very aggressive in when we have gone after additional funds because of the computing formula they use on how they award you, what they're going to actually pay you as opposed to the number of hours you work. He's gotten into many arguments with the people down in Columbus, but we've been able to increase that and make that a little bit more efficient. And we've also reduced the number of people that we have in that division by one. So we've tried to aggressively pursue that so that the contribution that you make out of general fund to that specific subsidy, which is I believe at 33% now, it was originally at 25 and it kept increasing it, that we've tried to keep that down. And we have in past years tried to save you money in that area. So we try to be very cautious and economically conservative there. If you have any questions on the 4D before I move on to the general fund? Nope. Okay, additionally, and then we tried to break it down in both the chart we sent over to you and to the letter that we had offered you as an explanation. We broke down what the general fund allocation was last year. And we listed how we coped with that. And as you know, we immediately, when we had a 20% cut, we immediately were able to beat that down to 15. And we took a reduction in pay, everybody in our office, reduction in hours of 15%. And that went on for approximately nine months. We were able to access a small amount of the stimulus money, working with the sheriff's department and the drug task force. With that money, we were able to offset one prosecutor off of the general fund budget. And that saved us enough money, at least for right now and as we go into this next year, to reduce that 15% reduction to 10%. So we were able to cut down in September to 10% reduction, both in pay and the number of hours we worked. That was how we coped with the problems that we dealt with last year on the budget reductions. You know, we talked, and I know that when I was here last year and you asked why we weren't laying off, or that was your first concern, because you were trying to reduce the number of employees so that you were reducing some of the other ancillary costs. In our office, because of the way we operate, if we would have laid off a sufficient number of people to meet our budget restrictions, we would have lost 30,000 work hours. Whereas with the reduction in pay and the reduction in work hours, we were able to cut that down to 23,000, which made us more efficient even though we had less hours, less people. And because of the way we work, it's really hard, you know, we can't just take one section and move it out. And it'd be difficult for us to meet our duties, both statutorily mandated and otherwise with our contracts, by doing that. So what we did was we had everybody share the sacrifice. Now, what we've proposed for this year, specifically in the documents I sent over, we were very aggressive in going after 4E money, which is children's services money and money that facilitates assisting children's services. Nobody prior to me taking office in 2005 went after that money. Because of Mary Ann Riley talking to us and telling us we really were missing the boat, when I first got here, we went after that. And we've actually had it for about three years. And that money offsets directly 45% of the cost on the 4E money for salaries. And then additionally, children's services provides additional money to us to offset the cost of salaries of both prosecutors and secretaries. For your purposes, we talked about, a couple of years ago, about taking that offline, segregating that just like we did 4D. Your concern, and I understand justifiably so, you're worried about the reimbursement. Because as you say, you always put it out, you'll never get it back. Well, now we've had a three-year window of history and we've shown that we have gotten it back. In fact, last year, I believe it was over $300,000 we were able to receive back as reimbursement to the county. So what we're asking is that you take that 4E item offline, take it off our general fund budget because it's 100% funded from the standpoint that it's not costing you anything out of the general fund. So we have proposed that. And the total allocation for that would be 249,750 for the salary. PRS allocation would be 35,000. We also get workers' compensation allocation out of there, which is 10,300. And the total allocation of 295,000 that we're talking about there, only which of, which 249 is actually the salary item we're asking about. Last year, it's, we received 302,481 dollars in reimbursement for that. So we actually have other things we've- So we actually have other things we factored in there that we give directly back to you, such as the hospitalization, which is offline on our budget. So we've tried to make that efficient from the standpoint of both what we get out of it and what the county gets out of it. And we're asking you to remove that offline and give us the same budget you gave us last year. If you do that, we can increase back to 40 hours. Now, nobody's salary is going to be back at the 2008 level, but I will get it as close as I can, and then our people are going to have to accept that, and they've been very good about sharing the sacrifice. Additionally, if you look at what we received as a unsubsidized budget in past years, my predecessor received $2,351,486, which was $45,000, and that was subsidized by children's services. So you've got roughly $2,300,000. Our unsubsidized budget, even before we take into account the 4E money, was, when what we're asking for for funding next year is $2,290,000. So, my unsubsidized budget is actually less than what my predecessor was getting. And then if you factor in the 4E money, which we're asking to take offline, we're talking about $1,987,000. So we've tried to be efficient in how we've sought out money and how we've been able to get other funding sources. If there was more of them we could go after, we would. You know, I worked for the sheriff, and I thought he was really tight with the dollar till I've seen Mr. Corey negotiate with the different entities we've dealt with, and he tries to get us the best bang for the buck, okay, both for our office and for the county. Even if you accept the proposal that I've given you, we're still going to be, over two years, net effect of about a 14% per year reduction because of the 20%. And this year, it would be approximately 9% to 10%. And then additionally, that's over $800,000 over the two-year period of budgeting. And, like I say, we didn't raise the issue and press it very hard a couple of years ago when we were getting the subsidy, because I know you were concerned about you getting the money back. So we've never actually received the budget from your office, which reflected the increased subsidy from 4E or the other areas that we've gone into. And we've tried to cut costs everywhere we can. Unfortunately, our stock in trade is time, our time is our people. And so we've tried to become as efficient as possible. If, in fact, we receive the budget we're requesting, we'll be working with one less attorney and one less secretary, and then we have one more courtroom than we've had in the past and my predecessors had because of the increased courtroom. And also, we were manning a fourth courtroom when the matter was being worked out in family court and domestic relations. So we've tried to be efficient, we've tried to cut our costs. We're not going to have anything left in the general fund. The majority of our budgeting, you know, goes towards salaries and the things that pertain to that. But we try to do everything as efficient as possible. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll do the same questions as everybody else. You have no special funds, correct prosecutor?
We have funds that come in that are drug enforcement, funds that come as mandatory drug fines. And when I went after the federal money, I used that $30,000 out of that fund to match it. We have a law enforcement trust fund, which can only be used for specific purposes, and that's a self-replenishing fund. And we built that up while I've been here, and in fact, have tried to maintain that because when we have special investigations, if we need to do a Title III, a wire intercept, if I need special forensic people, if I have to pay costs to do other forensic work or hire experts, we've done it out of that fund because the FOJ fund, although it's sufficient to do some of our cost, is nowhere close to being able to address that. I cannot use that account for salaries. I can use it for special investigations, and we have done that in the past to do certain things. But the thing is, is without that fund bringing additional money in, it gets depleted, you have nothing there. I can tell you, because the police agencies are all down now, we're not getting a whole lot of activity there. But we don't have any other funds, other than the ones that we go after that you're aware of, which is 4D, 4E, and then this federal subsidy money that we were able to access with the stimulus package.
I spoke to George during the break, and I didn't bring this up. I brought it up last week to all the officials, though. If we end up with a downturn in revenue for next year, because I think the consensus of the board, we've all talked about this, like a quarterly budget, is your department prepared to use any furlough days if need be to balance out any shortfall we might have?
Well, obviously, as we've done this year, okay? Everybody shared the sacrifice.
I did forgot to bring that up this morning, Dennis. I brought it up to every department last week, and been buried with everything else this week.
I understand.
You guys have done a good job, and I learned a lot about the prosecutor's office and as I did the sheriff's office during the issue four campaign, because we spent so much quality time together.
Yes, we did.
Note the word "quality."
As always. Just a couple of things to make you aware, if you know, they were talking about some of the other issues coming out of Columbus. I just went to a meeting last week at the OPAA. They're talking about revamping the domestic violence law and increasing the penalties, okay? Now, understand that that's again something that's going to come down with no funding to facilitate it either from law enforcement, prosecutorial, or the incarceration side. The open file discovery, you know, I understand is on a fast track, and we talked to some of the people that built the computer system for Cuyahoga County. Depending on who you believe, they spent several million, maybe as much as $3 million, to develop that system to try to cope with matching up, you know, documenting the paperwork and that. I just think that we're seeing more and more things come out of Columbus, and even though they're talking about reducing the number of people in the state prison system and the DRC, every time we turn around, they're passing another law that requires mandatory incarceration. And you want to push as much as that as possible down to the community-based corrections and the jail. And, you know, it's just something that the counties can't absorb this cost. And trust me, they're aware of that down in Columbus, because every time I have somebody goes to one of those hearings, they bring that issue up, so.
I don't have any more questions.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Mattis, corner.
Good afternoon.
Hello. It is afternoon.
Hi, I hope to be rather short and sweet. We're not asking for any additional appropriation for next year. Two years ago, we had seven physicians, investigator, and office manager to conduct all of our business 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We were down to five physicians. Two physicians have been released, investigator's been released. It's really bare bones in our office, but I'm not complaining. We're doing the best work we can under the circumstances. So, I'm not going to be complaining about that. The major issue that I have today is one that's a perennial problem due to a quirk in the Ohio Revised Code mandating that when an accident or casualty occurs in a county and an autopsy is done in an adjacent county. And this comes as a result of our life-flight situation here, which is, you know, new in the last 15 years or so. If there's an injury on 113 and the helicopter takes the individual to Metro and they expire, the autopsy is done at Cuyahoga County and then we receive the bill. We have no control over many of these bills. In fact, just prior to coming here, the mailman came and brought me two more bills, two more life. I just got them in the $1,200 each. And we have no control over that. I don't even recognize the names of these individuals, unfortunately. I didn't know they were lifeflight, and I didn't know that they had expired. So, we've incurred approximately $20,000 worth, the county has, not my office, of these types of bills from Cuyahoga County. And I addressed this in a letter to you, mentioning that we do have this. We have taken money from every single account we have, and we have virtually nothing left in the accounts to pay for essential services. So, we have been reducing the number of drug screens that we have done. You know, it's very important to get to the bottom of cases, but I understand the situation here, and I'm doing everything that we can. And as you know, a basic toxicology is like $150, but it can go up to $300 or $400 when there's multiple drugs involved and specialized testing. So we're just going to eliminate at every opportunity to make sure we stay within our budget. Our doctors are working diligently 24 hours a day, and we're covering nights, weekends, holidays, every hour of the day. And we are woken up 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning chronically. So, I don't know what else I can ask of them, ask of them, other than to keep doing the great job that they're doing, and I hope that you will support our office as you have in the past and continue our budget at the same level we had last year. And I don't know how we can address this issue with the Cuyahoga County. And every county in the, in the state practically, except for Franklin and Lucas and Cuyahoga and down in Cincinnati, they basically have helicopters come to them, so they're doing the billing. So, I know that Ashy Bula County owes Cuyahoga County tens of thousands of dollars for the same, with the same problem. And, and I don't know what they're doing about it, but there's been some kind of a lawsuit filed involved in that. And so, that's all I really have to say. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Same question, Doc.
Yes.
Based on what we're looking at revenues next year, are you possibly able to implement a furlough program that the state is giving counties and elected officials the ability to stay within a budget? I know you're down to a 5% operation.
Yeah, we're down to five people doing, you know, and we're talking about illness and holidays and vacation, and it's pretty, it's pretty terrible. If I'm, we need coverage if I'm in court, or if I'm in the morgue, or whatever, we still have to have physicians respond. And all I can say is, we will do absolutely whatever it takes to make it work. And, and like I've said, we've already reduced to people. And I hate to, I don't know, it's a shame to lose talented people because we need people that know what's going on, who are, have the specialized training that they have and the expertise that they bring forth to assist the law enforcement and the judicial system. And I think we will just do what we have to. So I'm not going to, you know, we'll just do what we have to, that's all I can say.
There was an additional $10,000 given in the salary line item. Do you know what that was for?
That was for the, actually for the same, I mean, this past year?
Yes, in this year.
Was that, was that this year? Or was it, I think it was...
It's showing this year, additional funds given this year were $10,482. That was probate?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, yeah.
You almost got $10,000.
That's okay.
You'll take it if we give it to you, though, right?
I would take it if you'd give it to me, but I appreciate everything that you got, you all have done for our office, and we're going to continue to try to do the best we can with what we have. And if I have to reduce, I hate to reduce people, you don't get them back, let me tell you. You will not get them back, and then in the future, it's not going to be good. We have a couple of doctors like me, we're getting up to the age where, you know, we may be, you know, retiring or something could happen, and we need people that know what's going on. And I, we're trying to constantly keep educated people trained in this field. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mattis.
Thank you.
Judge Walther, probate.
That's why, because we went out of order.
Yep, we did.
You got the $10,000.
Well, I don't have any funny comments, like saying that I'm down to bare bones like the coroner is, so.
That was really good, Judge Walther.
He's the one that said it, not me. We were not asked, we've asked all of our employees to, or told them that they're not going to get any pay increases in their pay. As you may know, I'm kind of new to all of this, having only been elected this past year and then only assumed the sole duties of the probate court judge as of September 29th. And having been somewhat confident that the sales tax was going to pass, I didn't foresee this coming. But, so I have gotten a, kind of a crash course in budgeting over the last few weeks. We also consider ourselves to be cut down to bare bones. We have, in the past year, three employees were put on, not general fund monies, but are being paid out of special, I don't know what else to call them. We have these funds that are available to us, and that can only last so long. The Court Computerization Fund and the Indigenous Guardian Fund. We calculate that one of our employees that we put completely on the Indigenous Guardian Fund, that at the rate we're spending that money, it'll be gone in two years. Same with the Court Computerization. We took our IT guy and put him on the, our Court Computerization, and in a few years, that will eat up that fund. So, we look at, we, even though the amount that's there of $543,000, that does not include $118,000 of, is being paid out of these other funds. So, I will entertain any questions, just looking to see if we can get that for this year and...
Okay, I have to ask you the question that I accidentally asked the coroner. The $10,482 that was given to you additional in your salary line item account?
Was that a transfer from another fund?
No, it was a transfer?
Yeah. We, yeah, we declared a surplus in our, in our Indigenous Guardian Fund, which is one of the funds that we can declare a surplus in. We had two funds that we could have done that from, and that was the, at the time, I thought that was the larger of the two funds, and that's why we took the money out of that. But I don't think it came out of any general fund money.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
And that was, that will leave us, I'm told, with a balance in that, the salary account at the end of the year of about $88, so.
Judge?
Yes.
Is there any other funds going to be returned to the general fund out of your entire budget?
That can be returned to the, we have none of the funds, everything's been zeroed out.
Also, as I asked the prosecutor and coroner, are you entertaining the ability to use the furlough days if need be if we have an additional downturn in the economy next year? As I said, we've been talking about across the board up here, quarterly budgets, on how we're going to maintain that. If you have it in your bag of tricks, it may be a way of shoring up any additional shortfalls we have.
Absolutely, that's something we're going to have to consider. I mean, we're, we're going to do whatever we need to do to keep the doors open and fulfill our statutory duties to process guardianships, estates, marriage license, and, you know, et cetera. But I might also add is that my office has taken on an additional duty that has never been the function of the probate court, is that now, as the judge, I do all of the non-supportive dependents. That takes up a whole day, it's done on Wednesday. So, those criminal cases that are, I don't have the number, but I'm guessing it's somewhere between 150 to 200 criminal cases, just like another judge's criminal docket. I now have a criminal docket. Judge Horvath never had that docket before.
Is that a common pleas or domestic?
Well, years ago, that was a common pleas function. Then it got assumed under the Domestic Relations Division, and with the separation of the courts occurring on September 29th, there was some discussion of, between domestic and general division, who was going to take those. And it ended up being that I took them as a way of, you know, resolving, you know, that issue. So, I have a secretary that acts as the court reporter, the bailiff, and the secretary. I don't have a court reporter. I use the services of your office, Mr. Ernie Smith comes over and helps me out with a recording system. I have a recording system that I use in my office, and my secretary starts the recorder, and that's how we get past not using a court reporter. And if we have any problems with those, then, once again, what's nice about the recording system is that it never calls in sick, so. And then additionally, she accesses the bailiff also. And so she's doing triple duty and getting the salary of one person, so.
Real efficiency. Thank you, Judge.
We're trying, thank you.
Domestic, Judge Bezinski. Looks like the master's coming up.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I am very impressed that you have managed to stay on time. I, you know, I was... I, you know, I was, I was, I was doubting that for a while, but, you know, we were, we're back on schedule, and.
Well, Looby was long-winded, but the coroner made it short, and so did Judge Walther. So I think we picked up some time.
So that worked out well. I would, I would just start by saying that I had conversations with your administrator in '05 and '06, and at that time, he was talking about how there was going to be cuts in local funding, that, that he was projecting out a time of crisis to come, and at that time, that, you know, that certainly proved prophetic. And, in addition to that, you know, I, I, what I referred to as heated the warning. What I did was start taking steps and, and following up on my predecessor's steps to try to cut costs, and try to limit some of the problems that had, you know, would contribute to future budgets. I listed them under the heating the warning category here, which include eliminating the use of comp time, comp time costs money, maximum vacation accrual, eliminate sick time and overtime, the increased use of on-call staff, what we refer to as relief workers, wherever they're, as, as opposed to calling in, utilizing overtime, shifting employees where it was legal. Again, I know Mr. Looby spent some time talking about that. You know, we do, as a court, you know, we have generated, we do have a number of funds that I'll, I'll refer to later, because that's been a question that you guys have asked. But, you know, there's, there's limits to what you can do on that. We've also continued to seek funds. I know this year, you know, due to your own cost cutting, we, you know, you've been forced to eliminate the grant matches that you've done in the past, and we've picked that up where we see an opportunity to reduce costs or eliminate some certain segment, the most recent being the issue of electronic monitoring devices, which we, we've found to be necessary in order to keep the kid, the population down in the detention home. The other issue we have, unlike many counties, the share, who rely on the sheriff's department, you know, we have a less expensive transportation unit that serves to transport our juveniles who are in custody and, and in programs for the services they have. Last year, you, you know, have, having that cut, whether it's, you know, whether it was actually 20% or 25%, it was a significant cut for everyone. But we ended up laying off a combination of eight staff at the juvenile facilities, ended up capping the juvenile facilities. That resulted in a number of staff not having to be utilized. We have, in order to maintain Turning Point, which is the shelter, was discussed being closed, and Dr. Crowe from Children's Services objected vehemently to that, you know, because of the use that they, that they have for it, and offered us funding to maintain keeping that open, and we have listened to that and, and went with that. I have also spoken to him again this year, and he is, he is willing and able to fund that again this year, at the same level he did last year. We had a number of staff over the last, since probably '07, you know, we have started not rehiring staff as, as they leave. That cut down on the number of staff that we had to lay off. Obviously, that did not have the desired impact that you probably would have had, referring to the ancillary costs that I know Dennis Will spoke of earlier, as far as reducing those costs, but it certainly reduced the costs in terms of the monies that you gave us for, for personnel. We have also went through, obviously, all of our costs, as other departments have, to address the, the concerns that were, that were related to funding. We were hoping that, that we would also have, you know, the ability to continue some of the things that we've done in the past, although, I know I, I've been advocating and hearing of cuts in the 4D, you know, and I know, I know you've heard about 4D and 4E. The 4D unit, you know, you guys have, you know, received reimbursement for a certain percentage. There was discussion in Columbus, as there always is, about cutting that, that reimbursement to the county. We've ad, you know, advocated, you know, very strenuously to maintain that, that reimbursement to the county, to maintain those functions, because one way or another, you know, when the, when the matter comes to court, we have to have it, so we have to address it. So, you know, in order to maintain our statutory responsibilities, it's better off to have the money come back to, you know, to us as a county, than, as opposed to just paying for it outright. Our general fund request that was put in in March was pretty much of a fantasy, in, in light of the sales tax not passing. What we were looking at is bringing us, you know, bringing back, you know, in that, in that initial budget request, I think, you know, we had hoped that, you know, the, the citizenry of the Lorain County would view more, more positively the sales tax retention, and give us an ability to bring our, bring staff up to full, full, full levels. That obviously did not occur, and so we had to look at all the things in terms of the list of adjustments that we needed to do, that we had done in the past, and that we would continue to do. In 2010, I, you know, obviously were concerned, you know, you're going to have, you know, tremendous budgetary pressures along those lines, but in terms of community safety, I, I know the prosecutor mentioned something about some, some increases. I looked at the second half of the felony filings for juveniles, and they were up 20% over the first half of the year. That puts additional pressure on all of those things, which contributed to that need for electronic monitoring, and how, and why we would have to really, you know, re, reorganize our resources. We've pushed in everything that, you know, we, that we can in order to maximize our, our services to the public. We've, despite having gradually reduced the probation and other, and other staffs, some are better able to be done than others, obviously. I did note on here, the increase for abuse and neglect cases have also increased by 10%, which in light of the economy and the stress on families is not surprising, but still an issue. As a result of all this, we adjusted our, our budget to reflect exactly what you gave us last year. That would, with the exception of the facilities who are, or a bargaining unit, who have negotiated in their contract and have a 3% raise coming to them. And, you know, your office is keenly aware of that as well, when you have, you know, contractual obligations for bargaining unit costs. So, we are simply asking for what you gave us, plus the 3% that it would cost for the bargaining unit raise that's scheduled for next year. Before Commissioner Kalu asks, I will say that I've had extensive conversations with my directors about furloughs, and, you know, should that become necessary? We are, we have discussed how that would be done, we have discussed the structure of how that would be done. I've gotten the information from the, as far as the legal opinion and, and the, the recommendations for, you know, doing it, and how that would be done with the least impact on the, on the, on the services we provide. So obviously, that's something that we've looked at to, you know, if, if that should become necessary. I would mention a couple of things that were not, you know, we're still cutting, you know, if, when, with attorney fees, we're still cutting them 70% if they do not comply with the, the requirement for timely submission, which saves, you know, the 30%, you know, it's 30% for reimbursement, then an additional 30%, so we're cutting them more, which pretty much leads to the attorneys filing them on time, because they don't want to get cut 70%. We are also looking at the resource for, to generate resources back to the general fund, such as sending the matters to collections for failure to pay costs and fines and things of that nature that would go back to the general fund. That would not benefit us directly, but certainly, you know, we as being interdependent with you, it would, would benefit. We are hoping that that, you know, that that will be efficient. I know I've spoken to your, your administrator about the issues surrounding the indigenous attorney fees, and we were certainly hoping to reduce that cost as things stand, you know, we haven't reduced the cost, but what we are doing is transferring funds to cover that, so we don't come back to you for more money.
Doug, Doug, at this point, do you want to point out how low our reimbursement, even though the state doesn't give us all our money, we reimburse our attorneys, I believe, at the lowest rate in the state of Ohio?
Yeah, yes.
We need to, sometimes, we don't get enough information out to the public about certain things, and that's been a real problem for both the domestic and the common pleas court in the past.
Yeah, and, and our, our reimbursement rate for attorneys is the lowest in the state of Ohio, and it's lower than the general divisions, and it's very difficult for us to keep attorneys. I know, you know, Judge Bezinski has asked you guys in the past to, you know, to consider raising that, that, that needs to get raised by a resolution, and, and this goes back, not to '56, but it goes back into the 90s, when the last, you know, when this, when was last, was, was last addressed. And, you know, we're, you know, we would, you know, we would hope in better times that we would at least be brought up to the same level as the general division, because right now, we have a very difficult time finding counsel willing to take these cases for the amount that we're paying them, when they can go upstairs and make $20 more an hour. So that's, you know, that's, you know, that obviously is, is a significant problem for us, and, and a significant problem for the, the, the defendants in the cases. So, you know, we have a very small minority of attorneys that are working with us, but because it's mostly out of dedication to their, to their craft, and not because of the money that they're going to receive. So, we're, you know, this was, like I said, this is, you know, simply looking at what we have received last year, and we will continue to transfer monies as, as we, as we need to, to try to minimize any impact on you. We anticipate giving back somewhere between 10,000 and 20,000 this year. I know we gave back 70,000 last, you know, in '08, because of, you know, but again, because of the trend of trying to reduce costs, it was about 20,000, 20, 27,000 the year before that. So, we're, you know, we will continue to give back whatever it is that, you know, that we don't spend, but we're still hoping that, you know, you'll be able to maintain the, the budgets as close as you can to the amounts that were, that were given to us last year. But despite the fact that, you know, you're looking at some lean times for at least the next couple of years.
Back to my questions, Doug, you addressed the furlough days. Any other special funds availability of grabbing more dollars to take people off general fund?
We, we are.
At the same time, I'll give you both questions.
Okay.
Is there anywhere in the budget you could save 3% to 5% based on what we're looking to trend out? Because as I keep insisting, we're doing one-time fixes for this year, to save as much as we can, but I believe in 2011, when we don't have those one-time fixes, the healthcare holiday, the sewer bond notes, we'll never be able to shut down transit again, you know, those, we're looking at, you know, 10% total budget cuts at that point in 2011. I'm asking departments to hold whatever lines they can at this point. Is there any cost savings that are going forward?
Well, right now, we have.
You're like the sheriff's department in the jail, you guys are the big gorillas in the room, so.
Well, and I, and we have a number of people that are higher-end earners that will be retiring. We have two retiring this month, we have two to possibly three retiring next, you know, in next year. Right now, we are not planning on replacing those people. I will, you know, I will be doing everything, I suspect. So I, you know, I, you know, when Jim is, is over cleaning, you know, cleaning the bathrooms with the maintenance people, I will, you know, patient, and hearing what you're saying about what, what will doubtlessly occur, unless there's some upswing that we, we can't count on.
Right.
You know, we can't count on, on an upswing that would bring the revenue back up to, you know, you know, '07 levels. We can't count on, you know, the things that would, would, you know, increase your, you know, increase your general fund revenues. So, we're going to have to anticipate, as we have in years past, things continuing to be in, in a very dire strait, and, and taking the steps necessary to prevent layoffs. I think the, you know, the thing, you know, if you don't hire people, it's much easier to redistribute the work, make cuts in services, as opposed to laying off people. I, you know, I, you know, I hated, you know, the, the issue of laying off the people at the detention home and closing them was very difficult. I'm sure it's very difficult for you and, and for Mr. Cordez to lay off the number of people you do. You know, as you said, you know, as a bigger entity, and having more people leave, you're in a better position to do that over time, as opposed to having to do it all at once.
That's my intent.
And, and so I'm, you know, right now, we will continue to do what we have done, and that's to attempt to save the, save the, you know, save the monies as we go along, as people leave, making structural changes, transferring to different funds, because as Mr. Looby alluded to, you can't, you know, you can't just simply transfer money over and pay for a general fund obligation. But if you do restructure, there are ways to take, take, close out one way of, of service, open it with a new way of service, and pay for that out of different funding. So we will continue to, you know, to restructure as we, as, as necessary, to try to meet whatever obligation and whatever budgets you provide to us.
Are you doing the same thing they were talking about? Except it was really informative when I was in Columbus with this Judge McBride on how they were doing things with the video recording and such, but are you also not outsourcing the court reporting thing, like they said was a cost savings? If people are on vacation, are they sharing court reports?
Yeah, they, they just have somebody from another court do that. The one issue that wasn't mentioned is the, is, is right now, the appeals, the Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals require, you know, that, that transcript. So as, and if you're not aware of this, you know, just be aware that, you know, that you have to have a transcript in order to take it to the next level. So, you know, you know, a, you know, a, there is no provision currently to completely eliminate court reporters.
I didn't mean eliminate, just sharing in the outsourcing, because.
Oh, yeah, we're, you know, yeah.
That's a bone of contention between the County Commissioners Association of Ohio and the Judges Association, and expensive funds and such, so I'm, and that's one they brought up there, and that's the only reason, like I said, we've got this book. I don't know if you got a chance to see this rough draft?
I, I actually have, I actually have that as well.
Have you read it?
Yes. I went, I went through, I went through, I went through the, a lot of the things, and I particularly liked the idea of mediation.
Right.
And, you know, and I know that, you know, the issue in, in Ashtria Bula County, which you're doubtlessly familiar, you know, was the result, you know, their, their budget issues were mediated to a point to where it was, it was at the, at, at least at the time, thought to be mutually beneficial to both parties.
I was talking to Joe Morosky, actually, he serves on the Northeast Ohio Commissioners Association, we refer to this area, he's actually the president of that group, so we had talks about that, said this is all of our issues and stuff, so. I'd bring it up if the judges were bringing up and reference this rough draft, so. They said we can respond to them with any suggestions online after reading it. Have you done anything with this? Any updates on this rough draft?
I have not done anything with the, no. I have not done anything in terms of responding to it. I, I just, you know, like I said, I just simply felt that, that a lot of the ideas were, were something that we were prepared to do already. You know, should, you know, if, you know, before we would get to any kind, you know, I know that we would get, before we would get to a writ, you know, you know, we would, you know, we would, we would seek mediation in some fashion, because that's, you know, you know, we have obligations and, you know, and, and despite the, the language that would go along with, you know, stat, you know, separation of powers and those kinds of ideas, the idea still is that, you know, you know, I think certainly, it's, it's arguable that a, a prolonged litigation is a lose-lose situation.
Well, you know, the ability of the judges, as I said, it was very informative in relationship to judges that's never been come up before, but again, as being the largest budgets in most counties, judicial system, along with their sheriffs in jail, is what judges can and can't do, because judges actually aren't allowed to discuss the budget. That's why they have administrators like yourself to do it. They can't do it, it's normally multiple courts and multiple judges, so they can't make decisions across the board for each other.
Right.
But, yeah, the separation of powers was the big one. Judge McBride kept saying to the commissioners, and he's a former county commissioner, and having, he actually in Claremont County had gone through a large litigation process with his Court of Common Pleas in the late 80s, so he had experience for both sides.
And, and those kind of issues can be very costly to everyone, because, you know, we would, you know, we would have counsel, and, you know, and, and the counsel would be billed back to the county. And that would be, you know, that, again, that's.
For both sides.
Yes, for both sides. So it's just, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not a win-win situation that you want to get into, if, if it's at all possible to, to mediate it.
And also, I told Tim earlier, I don't know if you were here yet or not. And also, I told Tim earlier, I don't know if you were here yet or not, in half the counties in the state of Ohio, the judges' budgets are implemented by the general entry. It's not a negative, it's just how it's done.
Right.
It's not here, where we've always seen it as a negative, and we've all talked about it openly, you know, if you don't do this, you might get a general entry. It's a standard operating procedure in half the counties in the state of Ohio, so.
Where'd you hear that?
That's what Judge McBride said sitting there, he said it's a standard-
I, I went to the same, uh-
You're sitting next to me, Commissioner.
Apparently, I didn't hear that.
That's when I tapped to wake you up.
I, I didn't hear that.
You know, and that's-
Ah.
Commissioner Blair, that's, I think, you know, a lot of that is, is coming from smaller counties.
Thank you, Doug.
You know, it, it, you know, a lot of the smaller counties, you know, do journalize, you know, what you, you, you know, what you won't find, you won't find that in, in, in some of the larger counties, because they have, you know, they have budget processes that, you know, that are much more extensive.
Thank you very much.
Doug, when you were talking about layoffs, you talked about just the juvenile detention home. Is that the only place you suffered layoffs?
Well, the reason the detention home was there is because we cannot use any of our resources that we could normally transfer, or, you know, or, or, you know, you can cut staff, but, you know, when you, and when the, with the detention home or the facilities, you have ratios. So, I have to keep a certain number of staff there. You know, I don't have to have, you know, years ago, we, you know, in the general division, we had seven probation officers. We have three now. We have three general probation officers. I don't have to have any certain number of probation officers. I can re-divide it, I can, I can take it down. I have to have one childcare worker for every twelve, for every twelve children. So, I, you know, there, there's limits to what I can do, and that's why the, you know, you can, you can lay off those people, but you have to close the building and you have to cap your DH, because you have to have certain numbers of, of people around. And that's, that's where the difference is, you know.
But you didn't suffer any, any layoffs in any other areas?
No, in, in the other areas, we, we were able to do it through attrition and through restructuring.
And how many people have you lost over the last couple of years?
Um, I'm guessing around twenty. I could get an exact figure for you. Um, you know, I know, we, you know, we counted up, we, you know, we, we were trying to count that up.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen and how, what time period?
Uh, since two thousand and-
No, no, going back how far?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, eight?
Okay, if you're going back in part, then that was, that was the beginning, that's the end of two thousand and eight.
Okay.
So, you did not fill fifteen positions in, since two thousand, beginning of two thousand and eight?
Yeah, but, you know, I, I was going back, you know, I'm thinking in terms of going back to so, oh-seven, you know, subsequent to the conversation I had with Mr. Cortez.
Well, you, you started doing the same thing we did here. I mean, the commissioners started not filling positions when attrition occurred, going back two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, and, and counting forward. Sometimes, it was difficult, but like you, we were preparing for the inevitable. But, you know, we're down a significant amount of positions ourselves. A lot of reductions in two thousand and nine, early, late eight, going into nine, but we also had attrition, a significant, I think it was like ten or twelve before we even made those other cuts. And I remember the conversations with Doug that we had a couple of years ago, and so, I would count that as being prepared going forward.
Well, and that's, you know, that's, as an unfortunate necessity of, of being in the position that, that Mr. Cortez and I are in, is you can't, you know, you just can't afford to wait until, until, you know, the hammer falls, because otherwise, you know, it just, it can be just too, too devastating to the, to the services and, and the, and the people that you are overseeing.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Next is Lynette Gord, OSU Extension.
Yes, it is. Good afternoon. Um, I sent to you a revised budget request. And I want to thank you so much for the support that you've given us. You can see on there, on the left-hand side, I've given the actual expenses for two thousand and nine as closely as that, you know, as I can do that. That's-
Oh.
Okay, it's the, it's the two thousand and ten budget expense-
Request?
Yes.
Okay.
And on the left-hand side is the two thousand and nine actual, like I said, as close as I could get to total expenses. And then on the right-hand side, the first column is state and other grant funds that we receive, and then county funds requested. And I'd like to say that over, you know, we're the same way over the past three or four years. We've had reduced funding, and we have reduced employees. Three years ago, we had sixteen employees, we're now down to ten. And some of that has been through attrition, either retirements, or they've left and we've not replaced them. So, we've really tried to look forward on that. Under the educator and specialist cost, you'll notice we have a C-grant specialist that is totally state-funded. This position is housed in our office, but we don't pay anything. That position actually has federal money that comes into our office because we're there. Also, under the other support staff, you know, some of those salaries are totally grant-funded.
What page are you on?
That same page, that, yeah, that front page.
Oh.
Kind of the second section there.
I got you.
Um, the 4-H cartoons position, this is a, a person that works with the juvenile court, and when the juveniles are sent for a traffic violation, they come to that program. That's totally funded through the fees that are paid for that program.
Unfortunately, I had to sit through that class once, one of my children.
Me, too.
You, too?
I've never been there.
You've never been there?
No.
Your kids learned to drive more minors.
That's not true. I have grandchildren, and I've never been there with them.
Wow.
And let's hope we don't see them, right? The other position that it's totally federal-funded is the family nutrition program, brings in federal money for that program. And then our temporary employees, one of the college student position is funded with a combination of funds through Leadership Lorraine and our 4-H Endowment Fund, and the junior fair coordinator is funded through the senior fair board. So, we get monies for that. The office space, that rental, is just kind of an in-and-out fund. You give us the money, we give it back with those funds.
So, when you're talking about that, this past year, we gave you two hundred and forty-three thousand, and then we got thirty-five thousand back? So, really, we only gave them two hundred and eight, correct?
Yeah, we, we actually pay you every month.
Right, so-
We've got to pay for the building.
Right.
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 It's not paid for? Do we have a bond?
We have expenses for the building.
Okay. So, it's not really income for us, then?
No, it's just a wash.
It's a wash? Okay.
It's accounting practice.
So, it is two hundred and forty-three thousand? Okay.
Under the, the next category of janitorial lawn care, snow removal, we have once, once a week janitorial, and we share, this is our share of the cost, but we share with Farm Service Agency and Soil and Water. So, the total cost is cut in thirds, and we pay our share of that. And we've tried real hard to cut that. We renegotiated with janitorial this year and, and actually reduced that cost for two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten. And lawn care cost, we've cut down on the number of mowings that we have with that. Snow remover, there's not a lot we can do. Some years it's good and some years it's not so good, so that's kind of an estimate Phone services, that's basically internet hookup that we pay for, and we have other agencies that our advisory committee helps us with those, and our, the floriculture industry helps us with those costs. Travel and training, we've tried really hard this year to do what we call cost recovery efforts. So, if we're going to do a program, we recover those costs with a, just a small fee for that program cost that'll help cover that. The next page, these are probably the ones that are, are big cost, our office supplies, educational supplies. We have a lot of cost in that area. Our office equipment, you know, just the repair to keep that up, and our photocopy or lease agreement with those. I will note, we have not purchased new computers in three years, so we've not had cost in those. We sometimes have some special funds through some volunteer entities that will help with some of those costs, and so we don't use general fund money for that. And then postage is also a, a large cost for us, and we've tried really hard to use technology, put things on the web. The 4-H program definitely has worked hard to put their newsletters on the web and forms that the 4-H members can download and submit that way. And so, that's reduced a lot of that cost also. So, we've tried really hard to do that. And I will note, we brought in or helped pay for that deficit this year with grant funds, ninety-six, over ninety-six thousand dollars that we've brought in. And when we have county money, then we can leverage state monies and other grant funds with that money.
One question for you, for you, Ronnie Furzine.
Okay.
That doesn't have to be just county funds, though. We could try to enter a public-private sector partnership, have some of the private sector, I mean, I have pages upon pages of support for OSU that's been emailed to me.
Right.
And a lot of them are companies, I mean, the Willoways, the Green Circle growers and such. Is there a way that can be used as a partnership? When we were meeting with Keith Smith and Gwen Wolford the other day-
Right.
-in their talks, and other counties have the same problems, it's just not Lorraine County, and some have actually levies for extension that failed. I think Hardin County was the only one that passed.
Right.
And then sales tax that failed, that money would be redirected towards doing extension. Is there private, public partnerships to help meet those dollars needed? Because it's a very important program, it's the first time I realized, without OSU extension, 4-H gets disbanded.
Right, exactly, and-
It'll be a Lorraine County 4-H.
Right, and in this county especially, we have a four hundred thousand dollar endowment fund that is donations over the, I think it's past fifteen years, that is specifically donated to Lorraine County 4-Hers for scholarships, for camp, for other program. And if OSU extension is not in Lorraine County, that money will go, go away. It cannot be used.
Is that four hundred thousand spent each year?
The interest off of that is spent each year, and it generates between fifteen and twenty thousand each year that will go forward for those monies. You know, some years are better than others.
Sure.
They, they, they've worked very, very hard to raise that money, and it's invested by OSU.
Right.
But the earnings are sent back to be used for scholarships for our local students. And that, that, that's a sad, sad thing to even think about.
Well, and the other thing, if OSU extension is not here, then our youth cannot be part of 4-H.
Like 4-H goes away.
4-H goes away.
4-H goes away.
Yeah, they cannot join a club in another county. We cannot accept kids from other counties into Lorraine County, you know, it, it just goes away.
And none of us want to see that hap- what would be the minimum to keep the doors
That's something that we'd have to talk about. I mean, there are, you know, I think there are some partnerships that we can talk about. We have some grants that we've already written that we won't know about until maybe February or March, so at this point, we don't know what that bottom-line number is. You know, I, I feel confident that we can raise or bring in that ninety-six thousand dollars like we did this year, and hopefully more than that.
Well, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, the requirement is for the first, second, and third educator, the hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollar requirement.
Right.
And then housing, everything else is not required, correct?
Right.
Okay, so it's a hundred and three thousand, two hundred plus housing-
Right.
-to have a 4-H, and to have-
To have OSU extension.
Which would qualify to keep the 4-H program.
Right.
And what about the help for the Willoways and things like that?
Well, that's, we could look at maybe through your contacts, a partnership to help. I know Commissioner Blair has been working on some things, I'll probably turn it over to you at this point, I have a comment.
I just, I received, we all received an email from Craig Norton, who signed his email as a member of Lorraine County Fair Board.
Right.
And so, I wrote back and I said, well, gee, can you help us out? And Craig responded, he says, for several years now, the fair board has been providing three thousand dollars plus to the extension office to pay for a part-time person to do computer input. That was handled by them when they had three full-time secretaries. We have not yet discussed continuing this practice for two thousand and ten or any additional funding, but this is a topic we can visit when the extension staff has facts from your upcoming meeting. So, apparently, he's open to discussion. Hopefully, the rest of the fair board is, too, because your program is very important to the fair.
Right, and we have been, you know, they have supported us by giving us that support person to help with the fair every year, especially since we lost, we used to have five educators, and so we had two 4-H educators that worked with that, and we don't have that anymore.
And Lisa, we give them, what, the fair, thirty-three hundred dollars on top of the two hundred and forty?
We give them the minimum amount required by the Ohio Vice Code, a little bit more.
Okay.
It's a, that's mandated payment.
Looks like they just turned around and gave it to the 4-H.
Do, does the OSU extension have any ability to possibly bring together some of the larger companies in our community and/or farmers and/or whoever that benefit also from the extension, get here to see if we may be able to raise a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual contributions totally?
I think that-
Can offset this?
I think that's very possible. If we have some funding from the county, then we can leverage that money for other funding, yes.
And we've also received a letter, I did not share this with my fellow commissioners yet, because we received so many yesterday, kept busy printing them, from Ellen Rysig, is that-
Yes, from a master gardener.
Yes, and she told about the master gardener program and the fact that she is only a donor here, and how important that program is to, to all of Lorraine County, and just a, a little refresher for all of us here, how important that horticulture is to our local economy, to say nothing of the fact that, Ron, you can fill this in.
Well, if, if you look on the impact statement sheet that's also in your packet, and look on the, the top of page three, it shows the agriculture value of nurseries and greenhouses, and Lorraine County ranks second in the state of Ohio.
Thank you, that's what I wanted, Ron, to say, thank you. And we're aware of that, we have not forgotten that, and I just don't think we can turn our back on this. You know, we, we do a lot to promote Lorraine County Growth Partnership on our fifth floor and its economy, and, and this is the economy that's thriving, and, and we need not to turn away from it.
And I believe we're committed up to a hundred thousand dollars to try and continue to dial all right, so I wouldn't have as much of a problem contributing the same amount to the OSU extension.
Well, let's just go the, the rest of the way, it's not just a hundred thousand, it has to be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars so she can live in that building and pay it back.
Correct.
Don't we have room in one of these buildings?
Well, I think we just need to discuss options as we formalize the budget we go along.
Well, and further, we're doing quarterly appropriations, so we're not going to give you the whole thing to begin with.
The problem, the problem with some of these organizations with regard to quarterly, I know it affects OSU, I'm not sure what soil or water, is that we have to let the state know with matching funds what our allocation's going to be for the year so that it can be leveraged with state funds. So, we ran into this last year.
We did all at once.
Some of them we-
They weren't quarterly.
Right, some of them we had to, and that's things that we'll, we'll discuss as we process the, you know, the complete appropriation for two thousand and ten with regard to who needs to be alerted to what their annual allocation's going to be vis those that can be done on a quarterly allocation.
Looks like Lisa's going to be working overtime.
One of the issues with that is, is my understanding, if we don't have a state, if we don't have a year-long allocation, then we basically have to give pink slips to our employees because we don't know for the next three months if they're going to have, you know, the next allocation. have, you know, the next allocation.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct?
Actually, I don't know how accurate that is, I, I do know that, that certain matching monies have to be identified for the year, but as far as pink slips to employees, I'm, I'm not sure, I, I don't know about that.
With all due respect, they make their own rules as they go along. No pun intended.
This is the nice thing about having these hearings, is to find out what all of our, what we call orphans, our non-mandated, um, items out there, and what they do for the county, and how vitally important they are to us. But I don't think we can make any, um, commitment, a hundred percent commitment anyways today, because we really don't know where our gap is yet, and we probably won't know until closer to the end of the year. You know, are we going to be two-point-five million dollars short, or are we going to be four million dollars short going into next year, we really don't know, so have to wait and see.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come today and, you know, plead my case, and, um, thank you for the support that you've given us.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the good job that you and Minnie do.
And Tim is here also, Tim Malinick is our-
His name was mentioned, I don't think I've ever met him.
He's our horticulture educator.
You're the one that they-
He's been at the fair.
Uh, I'm sorry, you're the one that they like so much.
Okay.
You're the, you're the horticulture guy. Thank you for coming this morning.
Can I quickly say something? Have the day shot anyway, for everybody.
Maybe yours is, not ours, we're just beginning.
Well, I mean, it's shot because you have so much to do. At first, I wanted to thank everybody that did so much for this budget hearing, all the folks that worked so hard to do it. They've been very informative and even fascinating, and I'm wondering if you could find some way of excerpting the tapes and, and putting them together in another kind of a tape, so that they could be used, that information could be distributed through township meetings and other community organization meetings. It might have to be done in two sessions, but I think, I hope, I think other people would find them as interesting as some of us have. The, the second thing I want to-
Yeah, uh, surely, I'm pretty sure they, if, like, if, uh, the township communities would like a copy, they can, what is it, like a dollar, two dollars to buy?
Well, no, I don't mean a doc, a, a document, you, they don't need to hear about the hearing you had to begin with today about s- solid waste and so on, and there's some other things that have occurred in your meetings. I thought if they could just put together a good thing on the budget hearings, and, and what each department has said and asked for, and your questions and responses, it would be very informative to the community, and they don't think that, they, they don't know some of this stuff, and they don't think to look at your, when this whole thing is recorded. So, I, I mean, to think about it. The other thing I want to do is again express my concern about, uh, the attorney fees being, being so low, both at the, uh, both courts, and, and at cuts in juvenile services. We're supposed to have equal justice in this country, equal justice for all, I don't think we've had it, and, but I think any cuts of this kind even makes it less likely. Uh, I think we also should express our, uh, thanks publicly to those attorneys who have served, because of their commitment and conscience that makes them do it.
Okay. Ready to, uh, go into, sec? Make a motion that we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator.
Second.
Skalski.
Aye.
Skala.
Aye.
Blair.
Aye.
Order lunch for the ladies' men, because they're ugly up here.
Yeah, before they chew off fingers.
Yeah.
Not your fingers, not your son.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine-thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.